Okay, folks, thank you very much. Apologies for any delays. We are ready to begin tonight's meeting. Welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 30th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody. Hope you have enjoyed your Thanksgiving holiday. Tonight's agenda, just a few items. We have our public hearing and apologies, we're a couple of minutes late for that. On local law G proposed short-term rentals. And we'll put that up on the screen for you. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on Panda TV. Also Zoom. We have Dennis Colay, who is now the co-host of this meeting, will be helping us with the public hearing. Tonight's agenda. For the folks at home, here we are. So the public hearing resolution amending the law and continued public hearing for the folks at home. If you've signed up to speak at the public hearing, we have a list and you'll be called in the order that you made the request. We ask that you raise your hand if you're familiar with that feature with Zoom down at the bottom. And reactions, you'll be able to raise your hand and you'll be called upon in the order that you made the request. And so we'll hear from everyone. Just a reminder, rules established many years ago, three minutes for each individual. If we have time at the end for folks to speak a second time, there'll be an additional two minutes as well. So we'll be having our public hearing. We'll be looking at some minor amendments to the law and then establishing a date for a continued public hearing, which likely would be our next town board meeting of December 14th. We have a revised application for Community Development Block Grant that we'll be discussing after the public hearing and discussion on proposed local law G. We do have our board and committee reports as we always do for the second meeting of the month. And then we will likely go into executive discussion session to discuss matters under negotiation. So let me begin tonight with a couple of announcements. First off, I would like to let you know that because of the calendar this year, recycling Saturday, Saturday is both Christmas and New Year's. And our staff, our wonderful staff over at the Recycling Center has graciously offered to come in and work on Sunday, the day after each of those holidays, because we know that everyone's going to have a lot of cardboard and wrapping paper and lots of other things that will know to go to the Recycling Center. So that's already up on our website. And if you have signed up for notifications, and I see we have great attendance tonight, just a quick reminder. Couple of years ago, we retrofitted our website so that everyone can sign up for notifications and you can find out exactly what's going on in your government and get these notifications sent not only to your email, but you can also have them sent as a text. And it's been a very handy feature for many, especially during things like our recreational camp during the summer. Other notifications or announcements. And I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's been a very difficult week here for the folks at Town Hall. On Thanksgiving morning, we lost one of our own, one of our community members. Sam Harkins, who many of you know, co-owns with his wife Arlene, the historic Red Hook Diner, also has been filling in for us on a temporary basis, doing inspections, passed away on the morning of Thanksgiving. And we just want to send our condolences to the family, Sam and Arlene and life neighbors of mine down the road. And we're thinking about all of you during this difficult time. Another announcement, also sadness, but not nearly as sad as that, is that tonight we say goodbye to Bill O'Neill. Bill, who was born and raised here in the town of Red Hook is moving outside of work. How could you do that? Bill has been on the town board for 12 years, has been volunteering for nearly two decades. And I think it's only appropriate that we recognize his contribution here on Giving Tuesday, because Bill has given so much of his time, energy and effort. Bill, we have a proclamation for you here, which basically details, I think, what I've mentioned. You've been deputy supervisor twice under two different town supervisors for 10 years. You've been a town council member for 12 years. You've been chairperson of the intermunicipal task force. That's group that was formed, gosh, 17 years ago with representatives from the various municipalities to work on larger zoning related issues. And you've chaired that now for 17 years in a row. Out of those initiatives have come very important things for our community. Centers in Green Space, which is a Pace University Land Use Award Winning Initiative back in 2011, which incentivizes preservation of our working and open landscapes and develops the more difficult task, develops and identifies where development is wanted and has very innovative features like incentive zoning. And it's located here in the southern portion of the township adjoining the village. You've also been involved in the historic district zoning efforts to maintain the properties of the Red Church Cemetery. For folks who may not be familiar, the town was sort of obligated to take over the Red Church Cemetery about three or four years ago. And Bill and a group of many others have been involved in wonderful stewardship of that property. And St. Margaret's, we're very excited. We'll be talking about St. Margaret's again. We're excited to be doing additional work now in the interior of the building here on the southern portion of town near Hannafords. And we have this proclamation for you, Bill. Your contributions throughout the years, everything from investing in the community, revamping and revitalizing our recreational lands and acquiring more properties and really has paid off with the local economy and certainly has paid off as far as realizing the vision of the community as outlined in the comprehensive plan. So Bill, we can't thank you enough. 17 years of dedicated service on this Giving Tuesday. So thank you so much. Okay, very good. And Dennis, you're now a co-host of the meeting. And so if you can we unmute the town board members and our attorney or consultants? And then we will move right into the public hearing. And Deanna? Could you read the public hearing notice, please?
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on November 30th, 2021 at 7:35 PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law number G, proposed of 2021 entitled "A Local Law to Establish a New Chapter 112 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook to be Known as Short-Term Rentals" and to amend Chapter 143 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook entitled "Zone Regarding Short-Term Rentals and Home Occupations" "To Establish New Regulations Regarding Permits for Short-Term Rentals and to amend the Town of Red Hook zoning law in order to adequately regulate short-term rental uses." The Town Board has classified the action as a Type 1 action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency for the matter. Please take further notice that copies of said proposal, local proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public except by appointment until further notice. Pursuant to New York laws of 2021, Chapter 417, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in the public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at www.rehock.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTV23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@rehock.org and 845-758-4606 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note, "Local Law Number G, Proposed of 2021" in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three, interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email, name and telephone number to townclerk@rehock.org by 4 o'clock PM on the date of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance of the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated November 9th, 2021, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Ellen Faber. I.
Bye.
Okay, very good. Just for a little background for the folks at home, if you're coming new to conversation, we'll spend just a couple of minutes trying to get you up to speed. This is like most municipalities, the town of Red Hook has had to figure out how to address the issue of short-term rentals and emerging shared economy device. And so since 2018, the intermunicipal task force has been looking into the issue and has held weekly meetings. And during those meetings, I've invited people from the community and people who have STRs, people who have BNB's in our community, people who have had concerns or problems with STRs. And also held with the EDC in 2019, a public information session. And I think there's a couple of paragraphs here from that public information session, I think might be helpful. Bill sort of outlined it at that time to sort of characterize the comments that they've already heard related to short-term rentals. And it might be helpful for the folks to, at home to hear. So summation is, on the one hand, we've heard from citizens who believe there can be positive impacts from STRs. STRs may support local business. STRs provide for a balanced mix of short and long-term housing, excuse me. STRs may encourage tourism, giving to visitors our community a place to stay. STRs may encourage properties to be kept in improved condition. STRs may support cultural institutions. And I think we've already received some written comments to that effect. STRs may provide for housing options. STRs may assist residents to supplement their income. And we had comments about that as well. STRs meet the modern market demand. On the other hand, we've also heard from citizens their concerns about the negative impacts of STRs. STRs may adversely affect our local lodging businesses. We do have some letters from the BNB's in town. STRs may impact the quality of life in Red Hook. STRs may adversely impact the rural character of Red Hook. STRs may adversely affect the strong sense of community in Red Hook. STRs may cause Red Hook to lose the sense of neighbor and neighborhood, the concept of you don't really have a neighborhood unless you have neighbors that you can visit with, your children can visit with, and so on and so forth. STRs could potentially cause a problem in safety and security for the town. STRs may affect property values. STRs may adversely influence rental values. And we've heard a lot about the impact on housing prices and affordability within not only our community, but other communities as well. And this is a summation of what the task force had heard over the course of time that they presented back in 2019. Subsequently, they continued to work and to make changes on their proposal. They brought, finally brought their proposal to the town board back in April. And the town board has been discussing it and has made rather substantial changes to their recommendations. And so I just want to highlight for the folks at home, some of the basic provisions. And so we just have a few bullet points here to go over. Okay, short-term rentals, first of all, unless you're not aware, short-term rentals is defined as an overnight accommodation for less than 30 days. It's currently prohibited until it's authorized by the particular municipalities. Lodging in the town of Red Hook is not allowed in any of the residential districts. It's only allowed in the business districts. That's the Hamlet Business, the B1, the Agricultural Business District, so on and so forth. So two key points to know that in order to both guide and regulate short-term rentals, we first have to authorize them. So that's what any law would do, that we would adopt as authorize them. It does not affect monthly seasonal annual rentals. They are not affected by this proposed legislation. So if somebody was going away for the summer, they could rent out for the month of June, they could rent out then to somebody else for the month of July, and then a third party for the month of August. It doesn't have any impact over those type of rental situations. And for the folks at home, importantly, because we did get some letters regarding properties within the villages, any zoning that we enact does not affect properties within either one of our villages. They determine their own zoning. So highlights of the proposal. We've heard sort of anecdotally, people referred to it as draconian and shutting down. Short-term rentals will be allowed in every residential property within the town of Red Hook. Everyone will have a minimum of one-time exemption where they can rent up to 29 days. And obviously, if it were 30 days, it's not impacted by any legislation. It's no longer a short-term rental. In the R3 and R5, it's allowed up to 120 days. So this sort of mirrors what we're seeing in a nationwide trend, which is more restriction in the tighter housing villages, cities. And the more rural, the more relaxed and more welcoming we are of short-term rentals. So the concept is you have sort of three ideas. One is there's areas with zoning that you want to discourage an activity. And so in this case, that would be in our tight-knit residential subdivisions, think in terms of affordable housing. You've got a college park where you can still purchase a house today for $200,000 or a little bit more than that forest park where you can still purchase a house for something in the $300,000 and some odd $1,000 range. And so when we're talking about, you know, who's going to be our volunteer firefighters, who's going to be our workforce in this community? We want to make sure that there are, in fact, housing stock that they can acquire and continue to live in this community. So you've got the one area where you want to discourage a certain type of activity, but we are allowing it everywhere. You've got the one area where you want to encourage this type of activity. And when it comes to lodging, the only place that we really encourage it is in the business districts, ABD, and in the other business districts. So you'll see in this proposal that we're encouraging short-term rentals with farm stays in those areas. And then we have a whole host of more rural areas. That's the R3, R5, where we're allowing it. And one of the big changes that we've made is that we're allowing it unhoseded for up to 120 days in those more rural areas. Again, going back to the housing is generally speaking not close together in those districts. And the impact, any negative impacts, you're talking about noise, you talk about smoke, you talk about other things that we tend to hear about in these types of situations. We're allowing up to four better maximum, again, with the exception of the farm stays. Currently now, an agricultural business district on farms, inns are allowed up to 10 rooms. So this is consistent with that existing zoning that we have. The process, we made it very simple. The recommendation that came from the task force was that you'd have to go through and get a site plan or a special permit. You'd need to go in front of the planning board. That would be very burdensome, not only for folks who are interested in having an STR, but certainly would be burdensome for our planning board who would have to see however many applications come in front of them. So we made it a very simple application for the folks to see there will be a site visit, but that's primarily just to view the property and make sure that there's sufficient parking available. Compliance. So one of the things that we want to make sure is that the place isn't being rented out, for example, for more bedrooms than the Board of Health has approved the property for. Those are the basic types of things that are included in the legislation. And then, of course, enforcement. Most of the municipalities in Duchess County, Duchess County has an arrangement with what used to be referred to as host compliance. I think it's now Granicus. And they do a lot of the monitoring of the properties. And so there are enforcement measures, language fines in the proposal. The language about fines is consistent with all of our zoning. We have various levels of enforcement if necessary. So what are other communities doing? And I think the two that are next to us that, in the case of one, just recently passed their legislation, give sort of good examples of how mirroring these trends. So we'll start with the Village of Rhinebeck. So you have the Village of Rhinebeck, which is a dense, although not the densest of the village, but a dense village. And it does have quite a few lodging facilities there. Their legislation that they pass requires primary residence, which ours does in most cases. They have a lottery system. So they've decided they only want to have 15 properties in any given year in the Village of Rhinebeck. And for each of those 15 properties, they can only rent it out for a maximum of 16 days. They also have very specifics about you have to wait a certain period of time. You can't be within two other houses of another STR. So they've kind of taken a block-by-block approach, if you will. On the other hand, Mylan, which is more rural, continues with the primary residence requirement. Theirs is a little bit more onerous than what we have proposed in this legislation. You need to actually occupy the premises for 270 days a year. You're only allowed to rent out for a 90-day maximum short-term rentals. Now, we're speaking about, they can't add up to more than 90 days. But obviously, you won't be getting anywhere near 90 days if you have to have a two-day break in between rentals. And so they have other, you know, language as far as the CEO may revoke for good cause or really violations. And so we have language that mirrors that as well. So that's sort of a background of what the basics of the proposal are. Again, we have, and I want to quantify for you, because it might be helpful for everyone. You know, you hear things about shutting down and not allowing STRs in our community. So as far as how many residents or, let's say, parcels would be eligible to have the one-time exception for up to 29 days, let's include all the parcels. You're talking about 26, 2700 parcels within the township. If you're talking about how many would be allowed to have up to 120 days, those R3 and R5s are most of those. That's over 1,300 properties would be allowed to have up to 120 days. And then you have ABD, and then there'll be some adjoining ones for farm stays. You're talking about a good couple of hundred there that won't have any limit as far as how many days they can be rented out. And that's one of the things we have in the clarifying language when we were looking at the last version, some editing was done and it created some confusion about whether the 120 days would apply to the farm stays. And that's not the case. So when we look at what's available, what the potential is for short-term rentals, we're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of nights of accommodations. We're talking about the majority of the township will have up to 120 days and a few hundred parcels will have unlimited amount of short-term rentals. And compare that to what we understand, maybe the amount of short-term rentals in the community, which is anywhere from 25 to, say, 80 or 100, depending upon the time of the year, whether it's in season or out of season. So I'm sure I've left out a few things, but I thought it might be helpful just to give the basics and also to let the folks at home know some of the input that we've already received, because since there's a, you know, a three-minute limit on your comments, it might help you identify which comments you would like to share with us for sure. So that said, I've talked enough. Why don't we go ahead and begin? We've got lots of written comments, but for now, we've got a list of folks who have requested to speak. And so let's see, we're taking these in the order that they've been received. Okay. Matthew Zucker. So Matt, if you would raise your hand. So Dennis, can I? if you would raise your hand. So Dennis, can I identify you and he will unmute you so you can speak.
Hi.
I'm Matt. How are you doing?
Good, good. Thank you, Robert. I'm Matt Zucker on Sizem Road. We discovered Red Hook seven years ago, thanks to STRs. And I doubt you're the only ones. I mean, at first, we were weekenders. Then we were most timers. Then we became full time and we love it. And look, I honor the time spent on this effort. It takes a lot to be a public servant. And I spoke to Bill O'Neill about this effort. He said they've been working on it for three years. Still, for me, this proposed regulation needs to be pushed back. We need to be honest that there have been no real problems that this is fixing. That, you know, there have been no real complaints. I mean, may impact, may affect, may cause, potentially cause. But they haven't, have they? They really haven't. It's not real. As much as it's being portrayed as reasonable, I mean, the proposed regulations will create like two class of citizens, especially unfriendly to second homeowners, which I used to be one of. And the regulations, they create limitations in neighborhoods that, do they really need them? I mean, our neighborhoods have space for a few STRs, including unhoseded ones, don't they? Isn't there enough space? Now, common sense regulation makes sense. Registering your STR, paying taxes, number of parking spots to bedrooms. Yeah, go for it. I'll support it. What I won't support, though, is a steamrolled effort, like pretending to ask others for their opinion. But it clear it wasn't done. I mean, over three years, there was no poll, there was no market research, there was no engagement. If there had been, you wouldn't see a response like tonight. You wouldn't receive a response like the last two weeks as this gets pushed through during the holidays. I mean, clearly, we know we need an updated town plan for Red Hook and our plan hasn't been touched in years. You know, maybe this is a situation that's a symptom of that. Maybe when we do it, you know, it'll include our unique town character, its history and its future. And that future includes farms, it includes businesses, and it includes STRs. Maybe the shame on us is that we should be creating more economic opportunities, which we haven't. Yet here we are shutting one down. I mean, I think we all can do better. We all want to do that and we have it in us. So thank you for your time for comment.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate it. The next one is C Lev. Do I have that right? Would you raise your hand and Dennis can identify you and unmute your Zoom? Are you with us?
I'm not sure if it's the person who's just iPhone with the hand raised.
Dennis, do you see that person with the iPhone?
Hold on a second. Okay. Yeah, so I'm not sure who. Let's see, I see Jacqueline.
It just says iPhone. It's got a thumbprint.
So type in iPhone.
All right, is C Lev not with us?
Let me ask them to unmute and then we'll see.
No, that's not the one.
That's not it?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we can move on to the next person and come back.
Sarah Carlson.
Okay. Sarah, I hope you're with us.
Hey, she is.
While we unmute her, for folks at home, Sarah has that wonderful store in the village, The Crow's Nest.
Okay, she's unmuted.
Thank you. Yeah. Hi. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, nice to be here. Thank you. So I have an STR and I have a store in the village, as you mentioned. So I have kind of a unique perspective from both sides. And I am opposing, you know, most of what this is presenting. I agree that there can be some regulation. I'm not opposed to safety or parking spaces, as the first speaker said. But I wanted to kind of give you an idea of who stays with me. And the people that stay with me are your family members. They're here for your family celebrations, your birthdays, your milestone anniversaries. They are not people that are going to disrupt community in any way. They enhance community. In addition to people like that coming in and staying with me, my neighbors have used my Airbnb for their relatives or business affiliates that have to come into the community. And I just want to make that clear that the people that are staying are not party animals. This isn't Daytona Beach. It's Red Hook, New York, and they're coming just to get away and be peaceful. In addition to that, I want to say, as a business owner in the village of Red Hook, the majority of my business comes from people that are visiting this community. I would not survive only on you know, the people that live here full time. I just simply would not. And so the same people that are attending your milestone birthday parties and anniversaries, staying with me, are buying from me to give you gifts. And so I think that that really needs to be understood and acknowledged. And that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Todd Baywright. Todd, Todd, are you with us? There he is.
Oh, how's my hair, Robert?
Well, you know, you're trying, you're trying to trap me into a question. It's great seeing you. How are you?
You too. Speaking. Hi. I'm Todd Baywright, 83 Apple Ring Road, Town of Red Hook, small business owner. I understand small business. I care about small business. I do not, I do not have an STR. But why? But why is a familiar question to all of us who have raised children, although rhetorical, it raises one's awareness to this issue at hand. The Town of Red Hook has proposed a local law to establish the regulation of short term rentals. But why? The question to the board. Is our overregulation and restriction necessary? The Dutchess County Tourism Reports in 2019, $400 million of revenue was generated in Dutchess County by tourism industry, resulting in almost $66 million of local state taxes, local local taxes, sales taxes. Airbnbs bring quality and needed tourism to the county and the Town of Red Hook, people like Sarah and other business owners. Yet the town is proposing a law that will reduce that volume of visitors. As I said to someone the other day, passing through Red Hook, do you notice how many hotels we have? And I said, yeah, maybe practically zero, right? I mean, okay, there's basically no hotels here. So Airbnbs are so important. It's a needed part of the tourism. So I asked, but why? The Town of Red Hook benefits from Bard College. They are on this now. They understood, they haven't understood this proposal until just today. I just read this afternoon that they that they are very concerned. The Fisher Center at Bard as well, and the town and village businesses, farms and so on. We all count on tourism. Dutchess County Tourism promotes these attractions as a reason to visit Dutchess County, particularly the Town of Red Hook. The summary of local law of one of 2018, prepared by the Town of Red Hook, clearly discusses the benefits from a community enhancing its unique, our community, enhancing its unique set of assets, whether natural, architectural, cultural, to induce tourists to visit. The local law also promotes the Hamlet businesses, business districts, including restaurants, retail businesses, libraries, galleries, museums, farmers markets, all to benefit local businesses. But now the town is looking to restrict tourism and people coming to our community. A year ago, I saw someone on the street in the Village of Red Hook. My God, they were actually dragging a suitcase with casters. I said, where the hell did they come from? Anyway, I'll get back to my presentation. Right? I mean, that's, we should have a few hotels, but we don't. So we need these Airbnbs. But now the town is looking to restrict tourism to the community, which would naturally benefit these very activities and operations that the town seeks to improve on. Why? But why? The town is intent to reduce the introduction.
Five seconds, there, young man.
Yeah, excuse me?
You got five seconds.
Seconds. Robert used up way too much of my time.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
Robert, you can invite me back at the end. I'll finish.
Yes, you can have two minutes at the end. If we have time, folks can have two minutes at the end. And Todd, just a couple of things. We're not going to comment. Of course, you know, I'm going to break that rule, aren't I? I just want to let you know, you mentioned about Bard College and, you know, I'm in biweekly calls with them. And you know, what they communicate to us is quite the opposite. First of all, we want to enhance tourism. We want to have places for people to come.
Don't just talk.
Todd, let me.
And you talk and you talk. It doesn't make sense.
Okay, Todd. Thanks. I allowed you to talk. I just wanted to let you know that the administration has talked to us, the municipalities, and they're very concerned about the rental pricing and also the cost of housing for both their staff and their students. Okay?
All right. So before we go on there, I'm trying to find Emily Mayers or John Duncan. I'm not seeing them. Can you raise your hand, please, in the session? You see anybody? Hold on. I don't know who, I'm not sure who's. I'm not seeing anybody popping up here. Do they know? I'm going to move on to the next one. Peter Close. You raise your hand, please?
I think his name is there. There he is.
Yep, gotcha. Yeah.
Peter, are you there?
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've been retained by a consortium of local landowners who operate short term rentals in the Town of Red Hook. Each person in this alliance loves Red Hook, pays extremely high taxes and wants the community to thrive. However, they feel threatened by the sudden presentation of this local law. Gee, they feel removed from the public discussion. They feel like the proposed law arbitrarily and unfairly restricts local citizens from living their lives as others who are similarly situated live their lives within this community. At the same time, they're serious about ensuring that any regulation of short term rentals includes their commentary and complies with the laws of the state. I grew up on a farm in Red Hook, but my father, also a lawyer, instilled in me a sense that we, as landowners, should respect the rights of others. As politician, my father instilled in me the sense that a local government must narrowly tailor their zoning to balance an individual's right to own property against community's sense of what it's going to look like now and in the future. The community necessarily has the right, indeed the civic obligation, to participate in the proposed revision of the law. But the government has a stronger obligation to protect the most basic ownership rights. Most communities, such processes involve a public forum with prior notice, expert planning review, commentary by all of the stakeholders, a careful review of the impacts that that law will have. Here, we have none of that. None of that in the public record. At some level, it seems that the board is putting the proverbial cart before the horse by enacting the most restrictive short term rental regulation in New York State. For example, local law gee bans short term rentals in institutional Hamlet Business and Business Districts, but simultaneously allows lodging establishments in the same district. How does that make any sense? Indeed, as the chairman of the planning board in a small community where I reside, I've had been asked many times to review proposed zoning text amendments to balance the rights of landowners against proposed regulations. As a lawyer in this case, I have commented extensively in my letter to the board about how this law necessarily abridges the rights of all people to live in their homes as they see fit. Having to object to a proposed law, having to comment in the margins of a proposed law and having to appear at a public meeting to discuss a law where there's been no public comment or input is putting the cart before the horse. This entire process is backwards and will be reversed by a state court. As I set forth in my letter, there are several legal doctrines which protect landowners' interests by limiting the government's authority to regulate land use. Substantive due process, which requires that land use regulations serve a legitimate public purpose. Here, the board blankly states that the law will preserve health, safety and welfare of the community, while offering no concrete evidence of what it sees as the impacts of short term rentals. I bet the board has no idea how many STRs operate in each district. I bet that there's been very few actual citizen complaints about short term rentals. I bet that many people don't even know. I'm sorry?
You've got 15 seconds.
I mean, there's so much to be said about this law that should be said in the public forum. I implore you to work with professionals to identify what the negative impacts are, what the public safety and health and welfare concerns might be, and how this town can craft a law that addresses these concerns without trembling the basic right of a person to operate a short term rental in a residential setting.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, very good. Next up, Laura.
Whoops, can you hear me?
Hi, Laura. How are you doing?
I'm terrific. Yes, my name is Laura Height. I'm a resident. I live on Karen's Drive. And I agree with most of the comments before us with regard to the process. But I completely have a different view with regard to the proposal. My husband and I submitted written comments expressing our disappointment with this proposal that it is way too broad.
Have we lost Laura? We've lost your audio, Laura.
This town is missing an opportunity to really address the issues of tourism and lodging. The town should be looking at actually investing more in traditional lodging options. Our primary concerns, which we wrote in our letter, have to do with the, you know, we recommend a go slow approach. You know, let's focus on the areas where we all agree it's compatible with other local land uses like agriculture districts. We're particularly concerned about the allowance of unhoseded STRs. You know, eight people, eight adults in a four bedroom house. That's a party house. Sorry. That's why people get together in houses is for reunions, parties, whatnot. And in particular, the once a year exception for unhoseded registered STRs is opens up the entire town to very disruptive potential behavior with with no protections really for residents. So I'm just going to talk a little bit personally about where we live. It's very quiet. There's about 85 or so homes where are 1.5. On Friday nights, when they have the concerts at Harden Orchards, a mile away, we can hear it very clearly. Lovely music. I'm not complaining. But you know, our noise ordinance only starts at 10pm. So if you have a party house somewhere in our vicinity, it's going to be affecting 85 houses. There's a lot of people that could be impacted by this and with a very weak noise ordinance to protect us. Another safeguard is, has to do with, you know, where is that home? We had a rental or something nearby over the summer. It was very loud. We had to walk around for quite a while to find it. 8pm, so we couldn't call the police because of their noise. But one thing we recommend in our letter is if you are going to go ahead, please make it transparent and put these names on a website. So when we do need to call it into the police, we can identify quickly where the site is that is causing the problem. But I do agree, there needs to be more community discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Emily Sacker. Emily, are you with us? There's Emily. Dennis, you have Emily unmuted?
Can you hear me?
There we go. We can, Emily.
Okay, I'm sitting here with my husband Joel. I hope you can see him. Good evening Supervisor McKeon and members of the town board. My name is Emily Sacker and beside me is my husband Joel. I am an art historian, an entrepreneur, and the publisher and editor of Red Hook Daily Catch, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit devoted to covering. a 501(c)(3) nonprofit devoted to covering our town with responsible journalism while training a new generation of young reporters. I also sit on the town's economic development committee, the EDC. Joel is a retired New York City restaurateur. Joel and I own a single-family home on a two-acre parcel abutting a 100-plus acre undeveloped plot of land about five minutes' walk from Bard College. Joel and I rent out our home on periodic weekends and some summer and holiday weeks on the Airbnb platform. As it has for months, the Daily Catch employs an independent correspondent to cover the short-term rental issue in line with the town's ethics laws, which dictate that I, as a journalist, shall not report on this issue while attending EDC meetings. Joel and I speak tonight with one voice as private citizens. Indeed, I will note, Dennis, for you, the timekeeper, that together my husband and I will speak for a combined six minutes. I will speak and he will cede his time to me. He's on your list, Robert. These are our principal concerns with proposed local law G. One, there has been inadequate transparency around the process to draft this bill and insufficient time and opportunity for potentially affected parties to participate. The ITF, the intermunicipal task force, has no minutes documenting its meetings and its members never visited a single STR to the best of our knowledge. We understand from senior leaders at Bard College, notably Executive Vice President John Becker, that they had no idea this proposal was on the table until it was in the draft form upon which we comment tonight. Two, local law G is an arbitrary bill that is designed to solve problems that do not exist. As but one example, the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, this past summer submitted clear evidence to you that based on Freedom of Information Law requests, there have been no police reports or complaints involving any STRs in Red Hook Township. Three, local law G is based on faulty assumptions about STRs that you, as our elected officials, have not questioned or investigated. A prime example is scapegoating STRs for a perceived shortage of affordable housing, when less than 2% of the 4,290 housing units in Red Hook are even used as STRs. A second example is arguing that STRs, quote-unquote, destroy residential neighborhoods when there is incontrovertible evidence that the exact opposite is true. Hosts are highly motivated to invest in and maintain their properties, and this has the added benefit of enhancing and revitalizing neighborhoods. Four, the proposed law is not based on adequate study of the effect it would have on the local economy. EDC research in the form of a questionnaire to 175 business owners last summer found that more than 30% of local merchants in both the township and the village say they rely on tourists to keep their businesses afloat. If you shut down any lodging options, you risk bringing these businesses to their knees. Why not reach out to Bard's esteemed Leon Levy Economics Institute to enlist a PhD student to study the impacts of STRs, all impacts, on the township and its villages? Five, the proposed law was designed to conform to a 29-year-old comprehensive plan that is outdated and no longer meets the needs and desires of Red Hook citizens or businesses. Supervisor McKeon, you stated to the EDC one year ago that you would test the appetite of the town board for revisiting this outdated document. That has not happened yet, and it must. Introducing important new land use legislation based on a plan approved the first year Bill Clinton was inaugurated is not just putting the cart before the horse, it is, I believe, irresponsible and dangerous. Not to mention, what does our township planning board, a diligent, forward-thinking body, have to say about STRs? Has that board even been consulted? Six, this law will do great harm to law-abiding, tax-paying constituents, to local businesses that rely on visitors to stay afloat, and to local institutions that rely on STRs to fill the need for lodging for a plethora of events. Summerscape, Bard Graduation, Bard Parents Weekend, Cotsbon Festivals, Fall Foliage, Sheep and Wool, Food and Wine, the Duchess County Fair, and many others. Furthermore, STRs are, unlike other options, uniquely suited to families who wish to gather and lodge together in a quiet, idyllic place for a few days of desperately needed reconnection. Seven, there is no reason that this issue, which has been simmering on the back burner for years, all that time with no trace of really serious investigation or really serious study by the town board, should now take on an air of extreme urgency. There is no reason that this public hearing had to be scheduled between Thanksgiving and Christmas, the busiest season of the year, and in the last days of a lame-duck session, when a new member of the board, Julia Solomon, is soon to be seated. I will note parenthetically that Ms. Solomon has publicly called for the town writ large to undergo a serious planning exercise to discuss our future. I will also note my frustration as a taxpayer that the town has expended thousands upon thousands of taxpayer dollars on lawyers and planners to craft this 22-page bill without a scintilla of public input or the deep involvement of our farmers, our merchants, our residents, our own Bard College. Supervisor McKeon, you operate a successful STR at one of your homes in Florida. As a host yourself, you are aware of the many, many benefits these lodging options offer to other communities, to their.
Emily, you've got 30 seconds.
As well as the importance they have to their operators. It seems a bit disingenuous for you to take a stand in opposition to STRs here in Red Hook. If they really are a cause for concern, we trust that you would have nothing to do with them. I implore you, town board, to slow down, to listen, and then to legislate. We must all recognize that everyone here has what they perceive to be Red Hook's best-interest at hearts. There are no villains here, just a few who are working with faulty assumptions, who haven't yet considered all the issues. It is time to step back.
I'm sorry.
To bring into this conversation not fear, but facts. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Emily. I would like to note, Emily, as I've informed you over a year ago, I've never operated an STR, I've never offered a property for STR. In fact, my investment condo in Florida doesn't allow STRs, neither the building nor the community, and I had told you that. Okay, next up, we have Adrian Truscott. Adrian, are you with us? There you are. How are you, Adrian?
I'm good, thank you.
Good to see you.
Great. Thanks for having me. My name is Adrian. I'm the Director of Public Outreach for the newly-formed Red Hook Coasts Alliance. My partner Carmine and I fell in love with this area in 2006 when I performed at the first season of the Bard Spiegel Tent, and we've both returned to perform there in various guises ever since. I've taught at Bard and have had residencies there, Carmine has catered events, and been hired to film performances. We began dreaming that one day we could afford a place on our modest income as independent artists. He's a drummer and I make theater. Eventually, we found a place, a wrecked-up, unkempt, nearly abandoned, Lord have mercy, genuinely diabolical place with tons of potential. And we bought the property in 2008. We spent the first two years sleeping in a tent in the summers, battling poison ivy and car parts and consulting with the DEC to rehabilitate the pond, which now proliferates with transient visitors and long-term tenants, birds, fish, frogs, and other wildlife that weren't there when we bought the place. Eventually, we bought a camper, gutted it, refurbished it, and put a solar panel on it, and it is adorable. We aren't able to live here full-time yet because we're still trying to build a house. Even so, we're close with our neighbor across the street and his family. Our camper isn't intended or suitable for long-term housing, so not renting it would likely not solve the complex systemic problem of affordable housing. It would, however, affect our ability to pay our property and school taxes. When guests stay here, we send them to local breweries, farms, restaurants, ice cream parlors, and these transient visitors picking apples or searching for a nice IPA and dinner out are delightful. People travel differently now. They don't necessarily say Red Hook or bust. They use online platforms to find something that speaks to them, a converted silo, a retro camper, a yurt in their price range. That is often what determines where they will go and where they will contribute to a local economy. It's surprising to me that the board doesn't seem conversant with how these trends operate uniquely in our community. Here's a photo of our neighbor's house. The other neighbor. It's hard to say at any given moment how many people live there, or when, or if they are there. Unlike an STR, there's no built-in accountability on the part of the landlord or the renters. There's no public-facing platform that regulates attention to cleanliness, safety, or property value. I've never complained about it because I'm not a jerk, and people struggle with different things and I believe are usually doing the best they can. But for the sake of argument, these tenants are by all accounts transient. Is this suitable, compassionate, and affordable long-term housing that this law purports to be concerned about? Who knows? This house has a certificate of occupancy and is part of our rural character. By all means, let's address.
30, 30 seconds.
Thank you. By all means, let's address the availability of long-term housing with innovation and care. But let's not pretend to solve it by scapegoating individual property owners using their ingenuity and generosity to open their homes, to pay taxes, to sort out a retirement plan, and share their good fortune and innate hospitality. Why ban such a rich, local, natural resource? If you take this logic further, you could argue that large swaths of unused farmland or privately-owned acreage exacerbates any shortage of affordable housing. Who do you picture when you imagine a transient visitor?
I'm sorry.
What is your understanding of the myriad and complex ways working people make ends meet? Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. And if I have it right, you're in the R3 district, so you would be under this proposal allowed to do short-term rentals for 120 days?
Yes.
Next up, Samuel Rose. Sam, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Put, put the farm to bed for the season?
Yeah, things have definitely calmed down. That's nice. I'm a resident on Grandmore Drive. I'm still on the fence, and I appreciate this dialogue. I sort out my views. My concern is that short-term rentals are limited now but will inevitably grow. The housing situation has changed since the pandemic. The question is, do we want to steer that growth with intention or let it evolve on its own for better or for worse? I moved with, I moved to Red Hook with my family from a community with lax enforcement of zoning, and coincidentally, it was very dependent on tourism. People were transitory and the social fabric dissolved before our eyes. It was one of the reasons we left and one of the factors that Red Hook attracted us as an authentic rural town. One thing I enjoy about my neighborhood is being familiar with my neighbors. However, especially since the pandemic, I've seen various properties on my block get purchased. Several have remained empty over long periods with perhaps occasional visits from the owners. I can only imagine these are second homes. I've had conversations with a few people in similar situations recently. One was a person living and working in New York City who bought some property a bit north of here. He uses the property with his family a few days a year, but primarily to nest egg. A management company takes care of renting the property through Airbnb the rest of the year. This same person wants to buy a second property adjacent to it and do the same thing. This is all well and good for him, but would this be appropriate for residential neighborhood? I've heard, I've heard folks say that short-term rentals only make up 1% to 2% of housing in Red Hook, but I believe this number will inevitably grow if permitted without any limitations. I think it's just a matter of time. At the same time, I could imagine that a short-term rental model like this would hardly be perceptible with a few apartments in a heavily-traffic area like downtown Broadway or Market Street or a large farm tucked away from neighbors. The dynamic there is different from a residential neighborhood. I believe in community planning with intention and vision. I think it is correct to permit certain activities in some contexts but not others. For example, I can't have goats and pigs on my front lawn on Grandmore Drive. I have to keep them on the land that is designated as an agricultural business district. I think that short-term rentals are businesses of a particular nature and need particular guidelines and zoning, so as not to have negative impacts on the rest of the community. And then just a couple more issues. If short-term rentals were to be permitted in residential areas, I can understand the requirement that it be the primary residence of the owner. At least, the owner could look out for the interests of their neighbors. I have my doubts that a management company or owner living elsewhere can do this effectively. An example from a periodical says that income from short-term rentals helps owners pay their property taxes. The flip side of this in my perspective is that permitting this type of business makes it more enticing to buy properties as an investment, raising the prices of homes and thereby property taxes. And in closing, I recognize I'm just one person in this community with my own set of values and priorities. We have to compromise on most things to get anywhere. I'm not against extending this dialogue so that we can properly assess all the angles. However, at the moment, my concerns regarding unrestrained short-term rentals remain. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. Hope you have a nice following. Carmine, Carmine, are you with us?
Okay.
Do we have Carmine?
I'm asking Carmine to unmute.
Carmine, you'll see something at the bottom left of your screen. It looks like a microphone. Do we have you, Carmine?
I'm asking again. All right, well.
Okay, let's come back to Carmine, make sure that we have another opportunity. Paul is next. Paul?
Wait, hold on, hold on.
Folks, if you can mute yourself, if you're not the person who's been indicated to speak, we would appreciate that. Paul?
Hi, I'm asking Paul to unmute. I'm not seeing any response.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you are. Paul, how are you? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. My family and I live in Forest Park, the Zone 1.5-acre area subdivision of Red Hook, specifically directly next to the charming and quiet neighborhood Short-Term Rental advertised on Airbnb for $85 a night. Two and a half years ago, while we enjoyed a spring evening, a random vehicle parked in our front yard, and the passengers proceeded to walk onto our property to seek us out for information regarding STR that they had booked for that evening. That is how my wife and I discovered that an alternative lodging operation was taking place in our neighborhood, approximately 75 feet from our daughter's bedroom window. No friendly neighborhood discussion and no posted permit. As soon as we had the opportunity to approach our neighbors conducting this operation, we inquired their estimated term for this commercial business in a residential neighborhood, and also how they, or the website, which this STR was booked, screened the individuals staying in our charming neighborhood. At that time, they informed us that they would conduct this STR out of their house, either hosted and non-hosted indefinitely because of the need for income, and that they did not know of any background checks were conducted. No indication was ever given that they wanted to support local business by renting out a section of their house. While local attractions are described in the online ad to entice renters, the only incentive for this operation is personal gain. Immediately, my wife and I had concerns of the safety of our daughter, safety of our property, concerns of our home value, and how this STR operation would affect our day-to-day life in this family-centered subdivision of Red Hook. A few weeks later, 2019, I was fortunate enough to speak at a town task force meeting, documented one of the 175th report, June 2019. I was able to express those concerns and question why such an operation could be possible in zone. At that time, it was obvious that the town and task force individuals had concerns and interest in the STRs. It was also clear that this discussion had been taking place long before my opportunity to meet with them. This is also documented in many task force reports throughout 2019. In my opinion, the argument that this law is being rushed and pushed quickly by the town does not hold when a simple search on the town website from meeting minutes documents efforts by the supervisor, members, and the task force to address STRs. I believe calling law G harsh and severe for those operating STRs in residential neighborhood excludes the individuals that do not rent out their houses but still pay their taxes, local business, worry about their children's safety, and care about their home values. I view my right to enjoy our property as affected by alternative lodging operations happening in a residential neighborhood. I feel that my family's safety is at risk with random visitors coming and going from my small cul-de-sac neighborhood at random hours of the day. I fear for all my neighbors in Forest Park that still do not know an STR is conducting, is conducting business almost daily in our charming and quiet neighborhood. If the concern is beds for heads by the EDC, why wasn't the discussion of the Rhinebeck Villas off in 9G North and Middle Road involved? That will take place, that will take place on zone commercial property. The business will pay local and county tax. While I have concerns over that project situated closely to our residential neighborhood, I question the EDC and why that was not factored in. Finally, what truly is the fight for STRs in a residential neighborhood? It is very clear that their purpose is for individual income and not supporting local business. The commercial operation such as STR does not increase the home values of the residential neighborhood.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Liza Parker Miglarelli. Did I say it well?
Unable to find her, actually.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'm here. If she, if she opens, you know, raises her hand, I'll.
You know, Dennis, why don't you try the one, the one that's got a 310 exchange? I think that might be. The one that's got a three ten exchange, I think that might be. She might be a nine one seven.
You mean the one three ten? I can ask on mute. Let's see if they.
Maybe not.
No, I'm not sure that there's anybody there.
All right.
Okay, so.
We'll come back, we'll come back and. Liza, we have Caleb. Caleb Hammond, are you, are you? Are you with us tonight? Like to make some comments?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, we'll move right on to George. George, are with us. George Carpel. No, no George either. Oh, yeah, there's Carpel right there, the K. You got it, Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay. George, if you would unmute yourself.
Okay.
George, how are you?
Doing okay so far.
Hi, Dave, how are you? Good to see you.
We've already submitted comments by letter or by email. The only comments I'd like to make now are my confusion as to what problem this law is supposed to solve. As it was mentioned right at the beginning, there wasn't a problem to begin with, except in possibly certain village areas where there was crowding. My other comment is kind of directed at Paul's comment. If anyone on the board has ever tried to register their homes with Airbnb, the guests are all screened, pre-screened. The host can uninvite any guest who does not have good comments following them, following a visit. The hosts are all promoted to take every guest they have.
Pushed up there again.
And I believe Carmine is accumulating, accumulating the list of comments from people that have been to our Airbnb. You know, not random strangers, the Freelys that grew up next, in the next piece of property from us that have been here for years. They twice to visit the area, visit friends that they grew up with. We've had a Bard college professor thing. We've had someone coming up from New York City who needed a weekend to look at a house in Red Hook. He was going to see real estate agent. These are not random people. These are not criminals that have been let out of jails. These are people that have reputations following them with every, with every Airbnb visit they have. I would say almost a third of our guests have been Bard parents visiting the kids for a weekend or coming up parents weekend. This is not like inviting a mob from across the border to come to Red Hook and trash the town. These are people who have known, had known reputations in writing on the Airbnb website. Every host has ratings on the Airbnb website. I'm sure every Airbnb person in this town welcomes a visit, inspection from.
I have thirty seconds.
All I need. We welcome an inspection from anyone on the town board, the zoning board. Come and inspect our Airbnb, come and talk to the people that come here on the weekend. Try to get one of your homes registered on Airbnb and you'll see the trail that's created.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George. I mean, if Dee's cooking, I'll be right over. Thanks very much. Next up is Dave Mack.
And I'm not seeing, I see a David, I see a Dave, no David. But I'm not sure if that's Dave Mack. There's a hand up, let's see.
Would you raise your hand, Dave Mack, and we can identify you? No? Okay.
All right, so Nancy Lee?
Nancy, I hope you're with us. Where are you? There you are.
Okay.
Nancy, if you would raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. You did it perfectly and for folks at home, Nancy owns the wonderful petals and moss in our community. We know it well. We just got flowers from there.
Hi all, I've been a host for seven years and I started it because I used to, through another business, go and stay in other Airbnbs. And I thought it was a wonderful way to travel and be accepted to wherever I was rather than a hotel. I love the people that come here. It's mostly Bard parents, some transients, some wedding attendees. But I also, in the local business, see the people that come through town and they help support our businesses. I have had nothing but a great experience. I've had my local neighbors write letters in and also use my home for their family that wants to come and stay because they need extra rooms. And I think it's a very positive thing for the community. I've had Bard professors, I've had Fisher student, performers come and stay with me because they need a place to stay just for an overnight to get out of the city. I do host for one night minimum. You know, and I offer a very tranquil, serene place for people to come and just hang out. And it's just been a wonderful experience for me and my family.
Thank you very much, Nancy. It's nice to see you.
Thank you, likewise.
Lisa. Lisa Murray. Let's see, we have.
Hello.
You are. Hi, Lisa.
How is everybody tonight?
We are fine. How are you doing?
Good, good, doing very well. I just want to read my letter to everybody because I think this, this tells exactly how I feel.
Okay.
It has come to my attention that our board meeting has informed and has formed an economic development committee to stop town residents from having short term rentals, Airbnbs or VRBOs and Red Hook. I am so surprised that this is still going on since the last meeting I attended, when ninety nine percent of the members of our town were for the STRs and the benefits of having them in our small town. I heard many residents who did not own an STR say that they felt that it was a benefit to our town and residents, to which I agree. I've had a bedroom listed in our home on Airbnb for about four years now and have had nothing but success with this arrangement. First of all, it helps us to pay for our very high taxes in Red Hook since my husband retired. While we don't make a ton of money on this, it certainly helps in many ways. Having this rental is not only helping us with bills, but helps many guests be very happy to stay here. I can give you names of many people that have stayed with us from all over the world. They have come to meet family to go to Bard events, Omega weekends, Duchess County Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds events, et cetera. One girl came from California to visit her brother, who she has not seen for twenty years because they couldn't get to each other. That's so exciting.
Thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
We've had a couple of, we had a couple from England stay here and to go to the music festival because she used to go to Bard and she's in her seventies. Very exciting. I have never been contacted from your planning board and you, there is, they knew that I had an STR to ask what my opinion was. I have never heard except for one person in this town that had a problem with an Airbnb. And I am just flabbergasted that this has happened and there's a twenty two page report, okay? When, when most of us have not even been contacted about this from the beginning. So I really am totally against this, this new law and it has to be redone and don't even get me going. Because this is just so not a good way to have business in Red Hook. We have used so many people to give to restaurants and we have helped our town and our friends.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa, very much. We are going on next is Elise. Elise, are you there? Elise, hang in.
Who is it?
Elise. You may, you may find her under Tim. White, let's see, is Tim, yeah, Tim Height, sorry, C T H there? Something. If you don't have Elise, try Tim Height.
Yep. Okay, please unmute. Okay.
Tim, there?
I'll send you again. I'll send you.
Tim, if you could unmute yourself?
There's the, there's no highlight. I'm not hearing him and he's, he's still muted. I asked him to unmute. He closes. What's this? Somebody's. Try once more and then you should move on. Try it once more. All right, I'm asking to unmute one more time.
Dennis, can you see Elise? She's got her hand waved. That's who we're, we're going for.
Yes, I can.
Okay, that's who we're finding out. Elise and Tim are a couple.
Hi.
Hi, Elise, sorry about that.
That's, I was trying to follow directions.
That's okay. Well, we all do. How are, how are you doing?
Fine, thank you. Thank you so much for hosting this conversation. Please accept my gratitude for your public service. We greatly appreciate it. It's, can you please turn? It's, it's, it's really appreciated your time and service. It's, it's wonderful to have a forum to be able to discuss. And I greatly appreciate the conversations I've had around this and the community in the last couple of days. I have some concerns, I guess I would say. Robert, you have my, my letter. I don't know that I need to repeat it or rehash it. But I have some concerns about regulation that seems fairly restrictive. And I would, I guess my, some of my questions that I would pose to the board for further thought that haven't been raised tonight is with the primary residence being the requirement, I imagine a bimodal distribution of people who can do that. People who are spending their summers in Biarritz may be able to move out of their homes for the summer or people who are more transient and have some traveling jobs that they can do. So I guess I'm a little bit curious about the primary residence as a requirement. I imagine that one of the things that the board is concerned about is having corporations come in and buy numerous houses and thus losing the character. I think maybe there's a more nuanced legal way to allow those of us who, you know, by inheritance or by accident end up with two properties who still live in the community to run Airbnbs. So that's, I guess that's one thought I have. And I would like to just express my appreciation for how welcoming this community has been to me and my family and suggest that we have room in our, in our community with appropriate regulation to continue to be open. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the character of what Airbnb or short term renters look like. I am one, so I don't think I look particularly scary. I have to say, you know, as a, as a short anecdote, Robert, and I sent you in my email that we were guests at Airbnbs this summer. The pandemic is not going anywhere. This is a newer, safer way to travel as a family. We weren't partying. We, we were fairly respectful neighbors and the neighbors in the neighborhoods where we were treated us as guests. And we treated them as hosts. And our, our littlest child was thrilled with this vacation because she said we got to stay in a home. On base. And I think Red Hook is a homey enough community. I think, you know, as other people have mentioned, thank you.
I see my time to Elise. Tim Height, I see my time to Elise.
That's very kind. I won't use much. Thanks, Tim. I would say, you know, there are, there are many ways to worry about our community. I look at the, you know, the people with second homes who come up only on weekends. There are neighborhoods that are empty here. And I, I see that as a concern. Again, I'm not, I'm not looking to over regulate, but, but I think there's some give and take there where I would rather see a home be occupied than be sitting empty for two hundred and seventy days a year. Thank you so much. Again, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to speak and I hope that, that you will reconsider some of the more stringent and restrictive aspects of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elise. Jean Anne Schneider, all the way from Tivoli, are you with us?
I am, but Robert, I'm not in Tivoli anymore.
Oh, God.
Actually, a resident in Red Hook. How do you like that? So.
Didn't get the memo, sorry.
Oh, sorry, you missed it. I just want to say thanks first and foremost. I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the forum here. I think the only way to resolve any kind of issue is through conversation, right? And consideration of various perspectives. So to give a little background, I am a longtime resident. I grew up in Mylan on a farm. I moved to Tivoli and lived there for over twenty years. I was a member of the village board there for a number of those years. And I've recently moved to Red Hook to afford a personal here. I do not currently run or own an STR, nor have I in the past. I have had the opportunity to stay at them as a guest. And I wanted to just share a little bit of the concerns that I have here. I do also want to put out there, I've heard a lot of folks talk about creating a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. And I do want to remind everyone, one of the things that I learned as a public servant on the board is that it's really, really key oftentimes to get out in front of an issue before it becomes a problem. The last thing we want is a knee jerk reactive response to a problem that's larger than we expected it to become. So I really have a lot of respect for getting out in front of this before it escalates into a problem with responsible and reasonable regulation. That being said, you know, I think that tonight is all about sort of looking at the basic framework and making sure that the adjustments that we make compromise, right? That's what this is really about. It takes our concerns, addresses them reasonably, and then also allows room for growth and for us to support our community financially through the retailers, the small businesses that we have here, supports our homeowners in being able to pay a little bit extra, right? Or to get a little income there. I don't love the classification. That's really not enough. Okay. To my points there, I would really love to see a little more leniency on the primary homeowner restriction. I think if we have a homeowner who is, maybe has a second home, but has a primary residence within the town, that should be reasonable to allow for Airbnb usage of a secondary home. And I am really concerned about the imprisonment. I know it's an and or, but I think that's a little bit too harsh for the violation there. That's just two points I wanted to add to the conversation. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Jean Anne. And just for clarification, the penalties and fines provision of this law do not relate to this law. They relate to all zoning laws. There was only one penalties and fines section. So you, you would have to try to imagine yourself, when would you ever want to have somebody brought in front of our local? want to have somebody brought in front of our local town court? And I think I gave as as an example at the previous meeting, if you had somebody, and this has actually happened in Duchess and Columbia County, if you have somebody who comes up and dumps toxic waste, for example, near waterways and you're worried about that being polluted, you know, to to levy a $250 fine or $500 fine would not be appropriate in those situations. In fact, they had to press charges against this individual in order to get that activity stopped. So the provisions do not relate to this law. They relate to all zoning laws and all they do is articulate for the reader the suite of options that are available to the municipality for any zoning violations. Does that make sense? And including this. Okay.
So, Robert, we're not finding Amy Gordon? Unless it's under a different name?
Okay, you don't have Amy Gordon. Amy, if you were here, could you raise your hand, please?
Do you have Leah?
I have Leah Papek that just raised her hand.
Okay, I don't know. Is Leah with Amy? We'll we'll get to folks if you haven't signed up to speak. And we're going through that list first and then anybody who hasn't had a chance will add you to that list. All right, we don't have Amy. Let's go to, we have Michael Ferrante. Michael, would you raise your hand, please? If you would. We have a Michael. We don't. Okay, well, we're coming back to these. Ilka La Monica, do we have you, Ilka? We do not.
Yes, we do.
We do. She's raised her hand. Okay, thank you very much, Ilka.
No, she didn't raise her hand, but I'm asking you to unmute.
Okay, okay, if you would unmute yourself, please.
Look, do you know how to unmute? If not, on the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, you should have a microphone that has across it, there's a red red line across it. Try to click on that. Hmm. I don't think so.
Let's move on.
We're gonna move on.
Okay, Ilka, we'll try and come back to you.
Daley. Let's see. Yes, I see. Ask to unmute.
Dan, are you with us?
I am, sir. How are you this evening?
Very well. Are you gonna tell us about how prices have moved up so dramatically in the last 36 months?
Well, they're actually on a decline from March 2020 to March 2021. Duchess County was up 25%, but since March 2021, they're down about 10, but we're still at 15% from last year at this time. For all you who don't know me, my name is Dan Staley. I'm a local Realtor. And I'm also the president of the Duchess County Association of Realtors, and I am speaking tonight to offer comments on the proposed short-term rental regulations for the town of Red Hook. As an association, we are supportive of registration and inspection requirements for all short-term rentals. These requirements ensure that these accommodations are safe for guests when they are staying in these rentals. We also support having a designated agent in place if the owner of the property cannot respond in the event of an issue arising at the property. What we do not support are limits on the number of days that a home can be rented to 120 days. Anyone owning property in the town of Red Hook should not be limited to what they can do with their property, so long as they are doing it in a safe and lawful manner. This type of provision has a potential to negatively impact the ability of host in the town of town to earn additional income that many use to help pay their taxes. We would also suggest that the town consider extending the length of the permit for more than one year. The process to apply for a permit is burdensome and could be costly for STR operators. Allowing the permit to last for two or possibly three years would allow operators to not have to worry about gathering documents and maps to fulfill the permanent requirements every year. As you are keenly aware, tourism is a key economic driver, not only in Red Hook, but in all of Duchess County. Limiting the choices visitors have when it comes to lodging could have a detrimental effect on the local economy. As we stated before, we believe there are some good parts of this proposal that we support and other parts that we want to address further. Our hope is as an association that the town board will continue to scrutinize this draft and ensure that the rights of property owners are being protected. We offer our services. If there's anything I can do supervisor to help guide you through this process, please do not hesitate to call on me.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, sir.
You too. Okay, next we have John Hardeman. John, are you with us? Let's see, do we have John? There he is. CH. John, if you would unmute yourself. Dennis, do we have John?
There we go.
Hi, John. How are you doing?
Hi. Hi, just having trouble to unmute.
No worries.
Uh, I just want to say that as a Airbnb operator, a short-term rental, I've had a lot of tenants that were families coming from different areas to come and visit in a in a common area. They may come from New York City, one may come from Boston. It Red Hook happens to be a convenient place for those people to meet. And they're looking for a home-type environment to get together. They're not looking to have parties. They're looking, you know, to be able to cook meals together, have a family gathering. And I think that is very positive for the town because these people do go out into the community, whether it's Red Hook or nearby communities of Rhinebeck or Woodstock. But their money principally is getting spent here. The hotel tax is paid by Airbnb or VRBO when you're listed and registered with them. So some of that money goes to the county, some comes back to the the local community. And it's staying here versus somebody that stays at a hotel across the river. But principally, these people are not looking for that type of lodging. They're looking to be in a family setting, which this encourages. I think the benefits outweigh any negatives that there could be. I I think that there is room for improvement on this code that you have proposed. I think that we need to step back and do some amending to it and get more input. And I would love to see this, you know, extended and drawn out and get as much comment from people as possible. I would just like to see you take a step back and slow this down and let people digest this. This code is, you know, a little difficult to read in some places. I think the 120 days limit is way too short. It's very limiting, and I think that that's one area that really needs to be looked at. I just want to conclude with, I just, there was room for improvement on this code. And I I asked the board to step back and take in what people have said tonight and hopefully have more meetings about this. Thank you.
Seconds, John. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. And if you would send us any specific recommendations you have, that would be terrific. As I mentioned earlier, the public hearing is going to be extended to December 14th. And we would be looking for specific recommendations. In your case, I think it would, you would be governed by the farm state provision for your STR, which doesn't have the 120-day limit. So just for clarification, make sure that you're aware of that. Linda Lindsay, you are next. Are you with us, Linda? Where are you? There you are. Linda, if you would unmute yourself.
I'm not sure what the issue is. She's here, but.
Linda, if you would look at the bottom left of your screen, you'll see something that looks like a microphone with a red line through it. If you would click on that, it should go away and you should be able to speak with us.
Robert Shelton. Actually had gone out. I just walked into the room. She was, has been listening to the meeting. I'm very sorry. I think she.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Do you know what she wanted to say, Shelton?
Well, I think that she, we are in support of the Airbnbs. We had one. It's now, we turned it into a long-term rental.
Okay.
We took great precaution to vet the people that were coming in and we had lovely people from all over the country that came. And I think that some regulation might be in order. Certainly, you don't want to have a party house next to your home. I'm not sure how to address that, but I'm sure it's possible. A lot of smart people here. So that's all I think we need to say. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, I think that concludes the list of those who wanted to speak. We still have a few more minutes. Did anybody raise their hand who hasn't had a chance? I see Jackie Goss has got her hand raised. Dennis, could we invite Jackie to say a few words? And folks, I think we're gonna go to no later than 10 o'clock. So we're gonna take, and as I mentioned earlier, we are going to continue this public hearing to December 14th. We encourage you to send in written comments. This way we can have them in front of us and and continue to contemplate them over the next two weeks or so. All right, Jackie, did we get Jackie Goss?
Yep. Hi, thank you.
Jackie, how are you?
Good. Thank you for letting me speak. I am, I'm a resident here in the town. I've lived here for 20 years. And I just also wanted to, I work at Bard and I just wanted to make sure that folks know that this isn't a kind of uniformly supported. I think there's some idea that Bard is an institution that supports STRs and there's a kind of lively debate today at Bard about it and many of our administration are in support of regulating STRs. So I just wanted to make that known. I I guess, in my opinion, I think this is really reasonable. I think, you know, we're not talking about banning STRs. It sounds like actually quite reasonable and lenient policy, in my opinion. And also, I would say, and it seems to me that every house, every STR that's not owner-occupied is a house that goes off the market and is a house that then is not available to people who want to live full-time in our community. And as you said, you know, these are people who would volunteer for the fire department, who volunteer in the community garden, who volunteer for Red Hook Responds, who, you know, run the community center, who, you know, volunteer to drive retired people to their doctor's appointments. Every single house that's an unoccupied STR is a house that someone can't live in. And I I really do believe that without regulation, the STRs could really, really do a lot of damage to our community. I think it's already happened in Ulster County where every three out of 100 houses is an unoccupied STR. And I just really am frightened that that might happen to our community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. And as I mentioned earlier, yes, we have biweekly calls with Bard College and all they ever talk about is what are we gonna do about affordable housing? We can't find places for our staff. We can't find places for our students. And, you know, this discussion is really about shifting as trends shift and people want to take advantage of short-term rental opportunities. It's all about supply and demand. I'm sure Dan is in a better position to speak to that, whether it's second homes or or short-term rentals. We just want to find a nice balance. Yeah.
So we have Bob Stupala. Ask him to unmute.
Is Bob next on the list? Great. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for affording us this time to express our opinions. We've purchased 4989 Route 9G 16 years ago. Our son went to Bard College. We bought it as an investment. It was a college rental. He stayed there. He, after he graduated, we continued it as a rental, a college rental. And we had nothing but problems as a college rental. And then Bard decided to build more housing and require students to stay on campus freshman and sophomore year. So that that put it, you know, a damper on us being able to rent it. So we were kind of at a loss. And the woman, a local woman, All Natural Cleaning, Denise Sullivan, suggested we Airbnb it. And we hired her as a manager because we live on Long Island. And it 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 was run successfully. Airbnb vets people. You have to qualify. You have to have standards in place. Denise lost the Omega Center for Cleaning and she didn't have an income. So she depended on us for income through the pandemic. And we also paid landscapers, plumbers, electricians, all local. Our guests patronized the town. So I, you know, I get a little frustrated when I hear, you know, Bard is not in favor when in fact, yeah, because they want to, you know, the students have to stay on campus. They, you know, they're, they have housing. So, you know, there's a little bit of competition for them in that regard. I don't see any harm in this. And one other point I really want to make is people say that.
30 seconds, I'm sorry.
If people say if you don't live there, you know, it's no good. Well, my wife's a physician. She's allowed to be 30 minutes from the hospital. If you have somebody who's managing within 30 minutes, I'm pretty sure nothing that bad is gonna happen. They're not putting out a fire. You know, they have something not working or, you know, so on. But thank you for the time and I hope everybody can come to an agreement on this.
Thank you, Bob. We're gonna take a few more. Dennis, we'll take about three or four and then we'll go to some of the written comments if we could. I want to make sure that people are able to hear some of the written comments.
Carl Dossino.
Carl, are you with us?
Yes, how's it going?
Good, Carl. How are you doing?
Pretty good. Hopefully, everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I just wanted to point out at the beginning of the meeting, you compared basically Red Hook to Mylan, which has a non-existent business district and Rhinebeck, which has over 200 beds within the village that people can say at every night unrestricted, no background checks, no anything. I'm also also interested in if there's been any safety complaints regarding short-term rentals within the areas proposed in Red Hook. And like a lady stated previously, there's been no police reports, no complaints of loud music, no parties, stuff like that. I just really think that you guys should step back and maybe reconsider some of the parts of the law and regulations and stuff like that. I think it definitely should be extended past December 14th. There's plenty of people here that are probably waiting to speak, so I won't take up anybody else's time.
Thank you very much, Carl. And thank you for pointing out about that. You know, one of the things I would like to add is that, you know, we do, some people do sometimes call us and speak on this issue about their neighbor operating an STR. As you can imagine, and we hear this, by the way, you know, neighbor-to-neighbor conflicts, it's not necessarily unique to STRs. In fact, quite, quite the opposite. Neighbors are reluctant to to often call police or whatever. You know, you have to live with your neighbors. So they try to work it out. So you wouldn't necessarily see so many police. So you wouldn't necessarily see so many police reports for them. Anyway, who's next? Dennis, we'll take a few. Vicki Perry.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I'll try to keep it brief. The first thing I'd say is the 120-day limit is, I believe, onerous. As other people have mentioned, the guests to the STRs are vetted. So questions about character are, are not really, I think, a big question here. I want to point out that I've lived in Red Hook since 2004. And I think the regulations for the town should try to retain the character of the town. And if the people of the town who live here for decades can't afford to stay, you're not protecting the character of the town. Now, I'm almost 69 and I'd like to retire, but I'm not gonna be able to unless I can pay my taxes and up, up, the upkeep of my house by renting more than 120 days a year. So that's the primary message I want to get here, is there are people who live here for decades. They want to stay and they can't if this limitation goes into effect. I also wonder why farms are somehow not limited by 120 days. I don't understand that. I have a single-family house. I rent a room. Why does a farm get to rent for 365 days and I can only rent for 120? And finally, it's a little bit mystifying why I hear that Bard needs space for the students. But people who live here in houses, residents who pay taxes have to worry about paying their taxes because we've got to keep the housing available for the students. I just, I just don't get the math. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Vicki. May I, since, since I've known you since I was this tall, may I ask you a question? Just to help frame some of the, some of the debate around it. So you've done Airbnb and you've also, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, you've also rented out a room for longer periods of time. So going back to that initial beginning, I don't know if you were with us at the beginning. This does not impact monthly, seasonal, or annual rentals.
I will say that renting long-term to Bard students was more of a hassle and more of a pain than renting to Airbnb folks.
And.
And the Airbnb folks did go out and patronize your restaurants and your shops.
Right. And so that's the only ones that you had rented to were Bard students during the monthly or seasonal or semester?
And Bard professors.
Bard professors, okay. Thank you. And thank you for letting me ask those questions, just to help, help understand your situation. Thank you so much, Vicki. Okay, we're gonna take one or two more. Then we're gonna do some written comments.
Well, there's Elizabeth Abus.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to say a few comments. Number one, I think this is a social justice issue. Because it's lower economic classes that have equitable access through a private home. Guests being guests in a private home in Red Hook. It's actually for grandparents, children, family groups that can't afford $200 or $300 a night stay in a motel or an in-town tourist Airbnb. So it's only by our means and other means that the lower economic classes can actually come and visit and stay with other family and enjoy equitable access to the area and to visit. It's a social justice issue. Number two, I think in the code, we have often come up with problems because of the terms are not defined correctly. When you have a private home and you have a guest in your home for a cost, that is not a short-term rental. A short-term rental is with a landlord bound by business law and zoning law. And it affects and is associated with realtors. It is not a private home, a guest in a private home for call. And so I think that's been a problem all along since this great offensive code's been written. And pretty much, I believe the code has been overreaching. It's been worked up out of a basis of fear. Fear of undesirables, fear of the unknown, unknown types coming into the community. And I wanted to ask if the zoning officers in the town really want to exert such extreme and total control over private home guests. I mean, that's, you're looking at a lot of things there that you're getting yourselves into. And third point I want to make, state is that hospitality to the stranger, that Airbnb, I'll call it that, is in my private home, I have guests come, it's a humanitarian action. I was just in Berlin at an Airbnb, visiting my son with multifamily, staying in one cozy room. And in Berlin, you can often see the history of exclusion, not good. Economic exclusion, exclusion of others, not good. So it's a humanitarian action to have a guest in my private home. And in that regards, the town might do, we saw in Berlin, which was that the town can request the names and the addresses of people who are staying in your home. That way, we're kind of sharing the love out and you can get a good idea of all the people who are enjoying the area in my private home under my, as my guest. I'm totally, they're totally my guests. They're not really your guests. They're my guests. And also, that's something I have seen done with Airbnbs, but not a fee and taxation and, and this overreaching, short-term rental thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, so Robert, we have, there's like two, four, six hands up and that's what's left.
Okay, I think, all right, let's quickly do the six and then we can get on with a few written comments and move on to the rest of the agenda. Excuse me.
Okay, Rebecca Rothstein. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Excuse me. Rebecca, are you with us? Rebecca's the proprietor of the wonderful Little Pickles in town, in village.
Hello?
Craig, help me.
Well, we can hear you.
Oh, you got me. Okay.
We got you.
Okay, I'm trying to put my video on as well. Just bear with me. I'm not very good with technology. I'm good with children.
Bottom, bottom left-hand side. There you go.
Okay, got it. Hi there. I'm Rebecca. I own Little Pickles, the children's shop in town. I've been a resident of Red Hook Village since 2010. My husband and I moved here from the city back then. And for me, the reason I wanted to be involved tonight, I know this is a town discussion, not a village discussion, but I do believe it affects us all. Being a small business owner in the last two years during the pandemic, and I don't think too many people have brought up the pandemic tonight, it's been really crippling. It has taken its toll in ways that very few of you can really imagine. And particularly on retail and restaurants in town. And the reason I really wanted to speak tonight and that I feel strongly to support small, short-term rentals, sorry, not small, short-term rentals, is that because of the pandemic, many people did not feel comfortable staying in the accommodations that we have been used to staying in over the last 25 to 50 years, hotels, bed and breakfasts, inns. These group communal accommodations became very frightening for a lot of people. And after we came out of lockdown, the few people who were feeling brave and adventurous, a lot of them young, a lot of them from the city, they chose to come to Airbnbs and they chose to come to short-term rentals because it made them feel safe. It physically, mentally, emotionally made them feel safe. And I think it's very interesting that this discussion is happening during a pandemic. This is not a time that any of us in our lifetimes have ever experienced. And I'm a middle-aged woman. I'm 45. Never in my lifetime have I ever experienced such terror to myself, to my family, to my friends. And I've grappled with it for two years and I've been a small business owner and I've lived through it. And I will tell you that Red Hook as a community and every business in Red Hook has single-handedly relied on the people who chose to take an Airbnb or a short-term rental in the last 18 months.
20 seconds left.
None of us, not a single restaurant or shop, has survived because of the locals, because locals were frightened and they were hiding at home because they had to because of state mandates. But when we opened up last June 2020, people came to escape their confinements in the city and they came and they supported my little shop and all the shops, all of the restaurants.
A few more.
So we need them more than ever. We need short-term rentals, at least for the next five to 10 years. Please support them. Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
I, I see Al.
Lively and I think, yeah.
Can I speak? Am I right?
There you are. Hi, Al.
Okay, great. I just, first I just had a little question. Are you gonna read my letter? I sent a letter in. I keep mine short. If you're gonna read my letter.
Why don't, why don't, why don't, it's always better when you speak for yourself. Since you're a speaker, I'm probably gonna skip over yours and just try to tap into people who didn't have a chance to speak tonight.
Okay. Now, I'll try and keep it short, but my wife and I are involved, so I'll try not to go over three minutes, but I should have six, but I don't think I'll get that far. So I would preface it by, you'll see in the, in my, my thing is everything has been like Bard College, 25% Bard College and such. And my neighbor that complained earlier that was so angry, the people that walked in his lawn were performers from Bard. And, you know, so anyway, so here's my letter. Okay, until recently, my wife and I owned a couple of apartments in the village of Red Hook. We upgraded them to provide a clean, nice, nice clean environment for renters. After 30 years, we look back on the abundance of horrible rental experiences at that location. We've had to deal with domestic violence, drug dealers, drug labs, abandoned units drenched with animal soil carpets and mounds of animal waste. These situations were worsened by thousands and thousands of dollars of damage and unpaid rent. Additionally, police were called by, by understandably upset neighbors over two dozen times. Five years ago, we decided to try STRs at that location in the village. It was an success with nothing but professional guests. With a huge Bard influence, we had adjunct professors, theatrical performers, Bard parents, and respectful tourists. Within four months, we hosted two different individuals who were looking to move to the area. These two mature professional people actually turned out becoming our long-term renters and have been for the past five years. We were so incredibly pleased with our STR experience, but since we had already got perfect tenants at that location, we shut down that STR. And lucky, and we hadn't, had not we gotten lucky with that, we would still be doing STRs at that location. Three years ago, my wife and I retired, or my wife retired from three years of, 30 years of waitressing and began collecting social security. Her social security payments are less than $11,000 per year and she is unable to return to waitressing to help support our household. To help supplement her poverty level income, we discussed opening part of our home as an LTR. After our past experience with the LTRs, I'm sorry, as an LTR, with our past experience with LTRs, we quickly agreed we didn't want the whore experience before. And more importantly, we didn't want to subject our neighbors to unruly tenants and the baggage that comes with them. Okay, instead, we chose to host an STR instead. This opportunity has greatly helped with our mortgage and taxes, but more importantly, it has given my wife the possibility of a new career as a productive senior citizen. After three years, our STR has been absolute joy. Easily 20% of our readers are, user, renters are Bard-related, parents, instructors, performers, et cetera. Many guests, many guests grew up here.
I'm sorry, you have 20 minutes, Al. You know, but, you know, Robert wants to remove that limitation, but we still have like.
Right. My wife is involved, so she can read the rest if you want. I probably can do it in 30. Hang on. All right, so easily 20% are renters from Bard, okay? Multiple state parents that regularly, regularly visit their children, out-of-state parents. They visit their children, they're Red Hook students. Every guest has been respectful. 10% of our renters are return customers and Bard parents is probably number one. We're in Forest Park, which is a 1.5, okay? But we don't, we haven't had any problems other than my, my one neighbor that doesn't really like it. Okay, but there's other businesses in our neighborhood. We have caterers, we have daycare workers, we have massage therapists, we have bicycle repairmen. It goes on and on and on. eBay, SD, Amazon, landscaping, speech therapy, okay? I commend my neighbors to have found a way to supplement, supplement their income, which is all my wife is trying to do as an active senior citizen. I urge that you visit our site and check it out for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Al, very much. Next up.
Savannah Williams.
Hi Savannah, you with us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Savannah Williams. I'm a resident of Red Hook and a Bard alumni as well as current employee. I just wanted to say with hearing Bard's name thrown out there a couple of times, I just want to mention that we were specifically notified today that Bard has no official stance on the matter. So I want to be clear that statements made tonight by people who are members of the Bard community are not representative of the institution at large, nor an accurate representation of the community's opinion on the matter. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank, thank you, Savannah. You win the brevity award, which I lost a long time ago. Okay.
Hey Jared Bengren.
Jared, are you with us? Jared, do you want to tell us all about your new venture?
Yeah, I think Todd Baywright will be happy to hear that there's at least eight rooms coming back to Red Hook.
There we go.
My wife and I are in the midst of a renovation of the Hearthstone Motel, so 2022, hopefully, we'll, we'll have some rooms. Which is why I'm here to speak today. So I was born in Red Hook. I was raised in Red Hook. I lived away for a number of years and during that time, my, my now-wife and I would, would come back home to see family. We often stayed in Airbnbs when the full family was in town and there weren't enough rooms at my parents' place. Those trips really allowed my wife to see how special our town is. It played a huge role in our decision to, to plant our own roots here and, and move back as full-time residents. I don't totally understand how it makes sense that 120 days of rentals on an R3 or an R5 property is safe for the community, but 121 days is not. There are mechanisms that we can have in place to deal with, with rogue Airbnbs without shutting down or severely limiting. You know, the vast majority of stories you've heard tonight are really positive. Any number of positive reasons why people visiting our town is, is important and helps support the residents that do live here. I think it's really important that we do have STRs registered. I think that makes it possible when there are bad actors to, to remove those permits and, and take those, those STRs out of the way, out of, out of the pool that people can rent from. Making STRs as safe as possible, like for guests and for residents, I think it's something we all agree on. I don't think the current proposal achieves this. I think there's time for us to talk about this, think about this and do better. And yeah, for what it's worth, I mean, my wife and I probably would benefit more than almost anyone from this proposal. But there's a lot of people, family members, that, that we want coming and visiting this town, frequenting our restaurants, experiencing the changing seasons, experiencing all the magic that we get to enjoy. So just plus one to what a lot of people said tonight. I, I don't think that this rule as, as articulated achieves what we want, which is a safe community and one that continues. which is a safe community and, and one that continues to be welcoming to, to people from out of town that, that might end up being our neighbors one day.
Okay, very good. And thank you, um, you mentioned safety. If you have some recommendations, Jared, we'd love, love for you to share that with us.
Okay, we have Barbara Murray.
Barbara.
I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
And Barbara, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, everyone there, for offering this forum for public comment, um, on short-term rentals. My name is Barbara Murray and I've grown up in the village of Red Hook since nineteen sixty-eight. I'm a co-trustee on a property in the village of Red Hook with my husband Jim Murray, who also grew up in Red Hook since he was four years old. We both met in Red Hook schools, graduated from Red Hook High School in the early nineteen eighties and then returned to buy my family house that I grew up in and raise our three children here. I'm a teacher in the Red Hook High School and Jim owns a window tinting business in Red Hook and also does part-time property management. We're vested in Red Hook, its charm and its character. We're proud to share our gem of a village and town with our guests that frequent Airbnb. We've had a mix of long-term renters that have grown out of short-term renting guests. For two years now, during the winters, these short-term renters have searched for homes in Red Hook to buy because they fell in love with our area. We view our renters as our guests. We prepare a beautiful home for them, both inside and outside. Now using Triple J Property Management, who's local Red Hook grad that I taught, John Dreisler, and our housekeeping is provided by Upstate Cleaning Management Services run by Kelly Borelli. Our guests arrive to a freshly ground coffee from JB Peel and Company. We stock both regular and decaf Red Hook blend coffee. They arrive to fresh flowers from our local farms and to complimentary jams made from local berries from Meads, Greggs and Rosehill Farm. You see, we are promoters of our beautiful village and town. We encourage our guests to visit the local farms, engage in concerts at Bard, go to Duchess County Fairgrounds and eat at our great restaurants, our bakeries, our coffee shops in Red Hook. We want our guests to feel welcome. We also want our neighbors to be respected and so our promotion of our guest house speaks about being located in a quiet residential neighborhood that, and that we appreciate that our neighbors' privacy and comfort level be maintained during any guest stay. Our guests have been quiet, they've been respectful and completely satisfied, satisfied with their experience here and they leave wonderful reviews about their stay exclaiming that they will return. We're proud to share with them and hope that all of Red Hook would welcome guests who visit here. Here are two quotes from recent guests. "We had a lovely stay at the Garden Street Guest House. The house was clean and comfortable and just what we needed for a weekend upstate with our two young kids. Thank you so much." From Leah. Another guest Heather wrote, "This place was as advertised. Great location, very clean and quiet neighborhood." "The personal touches made us feel right at home. We walk to town each morning for coffee and treat." We, we are happy, we are happy here and would definitely stay again if we were in the area again. I would ask that you, as the town board, to please reconsider this current bill. Um, so that short-term rentals can remain healthy in our village and our town without the excessive restrictions that are being proposed. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you very much, Barbara. And just for a clarification, your short-term rental is on Garden Street in the village?
That's correct.
So these proposals wouldn't impact, I don't know if you were at the beginning of the.
I, I was, and I understand that because I also have a lot of people in the area that are, that it would allow them to pack them.
Right, but it, it gives us an opportunity to mention, in addition to the thirteen hundred plus and the R-three and five that can do a hundred and twenty days, the two hundred that can do unlimited NABD and then the thousand and thirty-ish that, and the R-one and, R-one and a half that can do up to twenty-nine days. We have two villages who then will have to make their own decisions about short-term rentals and that's hundreds and hundreds more homes that have an opportunity to do, uh, short-term rentals as well. So the numbers of properties where short-term rentals will be permitted is gonna be in the thousands under, under this legislation and, and certainly in combination with whatever the villages do.
We hope we can all just come to some good agreement for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
We agreed that, uh, we were gonna cut it after, cut it after those six that had raised their hands. So, uh, we're done.
Okay, um, Dennis, and, and we're gonna take a few minutes then and just maybe capture a few comments. We have letters, um, that came in as well. And we, again, as I mentioned, we'd like to encourage folks to submit some written comments, one because it can be as lengthy as you want and we can sit with them, which is what we're gonna do, is consider all your comments tonight. Um, and so I'll just quickly go through a couple. Lou Rose, uh, writes about how he, uh, would not want us to enact this, uh, current, uh, legislation. He talks about having only two, uh, guest lodging options, the Grand Duchess and the Red Hook Country Inn. And that is certainly something that, um, the villages, we were speaking in the village, the village of Red Hook would love to have a lodging, a traditional lodging uh, place, um, in, in the downtown as, as the village of Tivoli does. Uh, Brian Faran writes and he wants to weigh in on this, uh, proposal. He frequents Airbnbs, but, um, you know, and supports them and he wants to point out that he fell in love with this area by initially staying in a property in Germantown uh, last year in twenty twenty and that's what inspired them to, uh, buy a home. There's more there. Doreen DeCarolus wants to know, she was caught off-guard and reminder for Doreen and everyone, please sign up for notifications. Um, we've sent mailings out, everything we can do to remind folks. Top of redhook.org, notify me. You'll know about everything that's on every agenda. It'll be sent to you. You sign up for the notifications that you want. Um, and she talks about her opposition to, uh, the legislation. We have, uh, notes, uh, from some of the farmers, Miglarelli, Blaze Dell, Chuck Mead and John Hardeman, we heard from Frank Fosper, uh, talking about the importance of, uh, farm, uh, you know, the impact on tourism on farms. Um, the languages considering shutting down are severely curtailing and, you know, I think what we would say is that from what we can tell, and it's a moving number of, uh, how many operating Airbnbs, we're thinking this legislation might forbid ten or less of the current, uh, Airbnbs, but again, um, you know, that all changes, um, you know, during the course of time. Nancy, we, we heard from, thank you Nancy. Uh, Stephen Lowry, we didn't hear from Steve and Maureen. Um, they also spoke about their Airbnb. Um, I think it's in the, the village, but Steve, call me and let me know if it's not in the village. Um, and a limitation of a hundred and twenty nights per year, um, is what they're objecting to. Did we, did we find Leah? Did we get Leah? Dennis, I think Leah was the one that we weren't able to, to get. Is that possible? Uh, local law G states that the rental needs to be the owner's primary residence. Does this mean they can't rent it out for more than a hundred and eighty-two days a year? I mean, if you were of a permit, collecting tax, the county collects the tax. By the way, we don't get any other revenue. Uh, she's, uh, in favor of a limit. Let's not let Red Hook turn into a weekenders world. Um, we need residents that live here year-round and affordable housing for working families to rent or buy. And that's what we talk about, that potential shift, um, in supply and demand. We have, uh, we heard from Steve, Barbara, we heard from Laura, we heard from, uh, Christine the mayor from Barrytown. And so, you know, some of the folks have mentioned no, no complaints. Um, uh, Christine writes to us and she feels that they should, the owner should always be on-site um, or nearby for SDRs and that they've had unpleasant experiences in Barrytown. And the owner shouldn't be on residence to ask renters to be neighborly. And I think I've mentioned that, the difficulty of, you know, complaining to neighbors. Um, uh, air traffic noise, she goes on, talk about a separate subject. Melinda Fishman writes, "We live in Myland and pay Red Hook school tax. We're against SDRs in residential locations and actively worked with the Myland Town Board to develop the regulation, which recently passed and was sent to the state." And I think we'll mention Myland passed their ordinance in the middle of November. Um, and it is, despite being more rural, it's more restrictive than our, uh, proposal. Um, and a Chinkwamani, um, find it absolutely preposterous to curtail Airbnbs and Red Hook for three reasons. Benefit to businesses, we've heard about. There's not enough hotels and lodging, I can tell you that for sure. Um, even though we personally do not run an Airbnb, um, homeowners should have the right to generate income. Again, go back to some of those stats on how many thousands of properties will now be legally authorized to run SDRs. Some of them for varying degrees based upon whether they're in a neighborhood, whether they're in an affordable uh, subdivision or a more affordable, I should say. Okay, we had, uh, Al Lively. Kate, uh, Karakasus, who, uh, lives on Pitcher Lane, she writes in support of the proposed law and she wants some clarification on the four, on the farm stays. In the four, the last four years on a parcel adjacent to my home, two small, affordable, long-term rental units have been converted to SDRs. And I think that's the concern on affordable housing, how many of these will go to short-term rentals? The informal neighborly interactions with the long-term tenants, trading garden produce and eggs and helping each other with studying ladders or moving heavy tree trunks are gone. In their place, we have frequently empty dwellings or succession of unobjectionable, unobjectionable. I think it's important to emphasize, we haven't had a lot of complaints about objectionable, um, uh, folks at, uh, SDRs. Um, and so we can verify that here at Town Hall. But what she's talking about is sort of that revolving door and the hollowing out of having the neighbors in the neighborhood. These two conversions demonstrate how unregulated conversations and loss of permanent residents could lead to loss of community and economic diversity. So that room in your, your house that you're doing it as a SDR, the, the argument would be on the other side could also be an affordable housing option for somebody in the community. Okay, Blake Zaff, um, last month, my family moved into twelve West Bard Avenue. Next door to a short-term rental at ten West Bard, the neighbors asked if we would send a note about our experience living next to them so far. And so far, they're happy to say that they maintain their property beautifully and have been warm and accommodating neighbors. We haven't experienced disruptions yet uh, to our daily life as a result of their short-term rental. And we've heard about that, how short-term rentals bring in um, capital and improved properties. Um, and then the other side would be that they make those properties so fixed up that they command money, which takes it out of the reach of some of the locals. Um, Cal, did we hear from Calip? I think we did, from the Fisher Center, talks about, um, the importance of having, um, short-term rental housing options for Fisher Center for Performing Arts and that we've got a few words from Laura, eight, and Alabroso. They include with it, by the way, and we'll put on the website, we have a bunch of documents we'd like you to look at. We, um, all or many of us attended a Northern Duchess Alliance, which is a consortium of local communities in Northern Duchess. Boy, I think about almost two years ago now, um, a presentation with a, a lot of, uh, attachments to review, um, included in that is a plan on it, Duchess County um, Department of Planning, a whole, uh, document with many links that we've, uh, reviewed. Understanding short-term rentals and it sort of lays out the, the, the same arguments that we heard in the beginning with the bill summation. On the one hand, here are all the great things. On the other hand, here are the things we might be concerned about. Um, John DeGregrio, um, owns Cavallo Jewel, Jewelers. I have to ask why you want to limit the amount of foot traffic in town by prohibiting Airbnbs as long as they follow rental rules? And I would just, you know, throw that question out there. Are we, are we limiting or act, or are we actually greenlighting um, a couple of thousand residential properties that can now legally, um, operate SDR? Uh, Carl Hoyt is, um, opposed to this proposed law in strongest possible terms and goes on to, uh, regulation of short-term rentals may well be a desirable goal. Um, and pleased about Red Hook has chosen to be proactive about open space and housing issues. More about housing, um, you know, nobody's suggesting that any kind of removal of short-term rentals will solve a housing uh, crisis. Um, no, no, uh, one single tool generally does uh, build the type of initiative that we would need for something like that. And there'll be more on that, I think, next year. Hopefully we'll have some proposals for you. Um, as a public, uh, Billy Williams, we did hear from Jessica Halman. Wanted to speak, didn't, uh, come. Yes, we heard from Amy Gordon, I think we heard from Amy in support of Airbnbs. Virginia Reed, uh, in support of Red Hook Host Alliance, unable to attend. Um, according to the town board, there have been no complaints. Well, we wouldn't say no complaints, you heard a few tonight. Um, but let's just say not a, not a huge amount of complaints about the guests. Uh, important to boost the economy, there's no argument about that, that, um, you know, there's potential to boost the economy with more short-term rentals. Agrotourism, we've changed our code, uh, ten years ago to provide uh, so much more opportunities for the farms and agrotourism because then they go and they support other businesses. Um, and that was part of the Centers and Green Space Initiative. So, let's see, we've got a few more here. I hope to include soon. We heard from Jacqueline. We've heard, um, Bob Seises owns the liquor store in Tivoli. Uh, wine store, I should say, in Tivoli, and likely to be seriously impacted by this law if what I'm hearing about it is true. Bob, we would urge you to read the, the law. Um, it's hard to imagine how the liquor store would be seriously impacted. Um, based upon this proposal, again, we would, you know, ask you to consider how many properties would be um, green-lighted legally to be, um, used as an SDR. Jason Francis, um, can you pass the, uh, email along? Uh, we currently reside on Norton Road and have been operating an SDR occasionally for about five years. It's our primary residence. When we go away on vacation, we've rented our home, the supplements. We have registered and have paid all applicable fleet, uh, fees. The local law will address negative impacts regarding that. Um, my experience as a host has not had any negative impact on the rural character or on the neighbor. Um, we've rented our home, the police have never been called for any disturbance. I will say that I did get a call, uh, or did have a call yesterday um, about a SDR on Norton Road. I don't know if it's this one. And again, neighbors don't call police generally with this problem. They try to work it out or contact, uh, the town government to see if they can help them in this situation. So, uh, types of gas, um, we talked about the importance of the venues that they visit. I think there's no dispute there. Um, Linda Keeling, Linda, who, uh, has champion ADA causes in our community and, uh, we've made many changes, um, in accessibility. We're very proud of, um, talks about yeah, mandating ADA accessibilities in these SDRs. So that's, that's quite a, quite a, uh, lift, um, if, if properties are to become ADA accessible for short-term rentals. And again, what we tried to do was make it easy, um, you know, the application, um, no site plan review. Uh, just somebody comes out to verify parking and any, uh, other basics. Okay, we heard Paul, Leepanaka, um, he is, uh, against the restrictive nature of this proposed law, supportive short-term rentals, even though she has no intention of renting out. Um, I know the availability of Airbnbs brings lots of tourists, we like tourists. It's an issue of the Grand Duchess, so, um, we did hear in the task force heard during the course of the four years uh, input that was received, um, you know, they invited, uh, folks to come in and talk to them. And so the two BnBs in our community have, you know, relayed other thoughts over time. And the Grand Duchess, Beth Pagano, you know, wonderful place. Talk about the two BnBs and, and why are they subjected to a lot of the, you know, annual inspections by both county health, food safety and handling for fire safety? Why aren't there fire inspections for STRs? The fees that they have to pay and hearings attended and why are STRs treated differently? Okay, and then lastly, and we're going to hold this open, we had communications from Duchess County Department of Planning. Unfortunately, our planner is the same one who studied the subject to the presentation and wrote the, the document on short-term rentals. And so Heather wrote to us with some recommendations and some questions that were positive. And we had a chance to, to review those. So while we won't be able to take in and, and consider all the comments that we've received tonight, we did have a chance to take a look at these. So we're going to maybe spend just a little bit of time because it's getting late. Taking a look at the latest draft that might incorporate some of these changes. And so I'd like to do is just make sure that we, let's see, did we capture everybody then before we go ahead and extend our public hearing? Is there somebody that we didn't capture? I think Michael Ferrante. Who that Dan Staley. Okay, we will have, if you did not get a chance to speak tonight, we will have another opportunity. December 14th, we would ask, encourage you to, to write to us as well. All right, on that note. This time I would like to make a motion that we extend the public hearing. Let's, let's look at the comments if we would and for the folks at home. Let's, let's see if we can tackle this draft. Chris Shaw, you with us? Chris, if you could unmute yourself. Dennis, could you unmute Chris Shaw, please?
Okay.
There we go. So very good. Let's see, we do have a resolution. To extend, to establish a date for the continued public hearing regarding the adoption of local law G1 proposed. Why don't we tackle some of the clarifications? We've posed some clarifications in the law. We want to make sure that the law is updated so that the folks at home can see any revisions to it and comment on them between now and the extension of the hearing, which as we've said, will be December 14th. So can we take a look at the most recent draft for your consideration, Town Board members, Chris Shaw? Could I ask you to walk us through, since you have, as our attorney to the town, been responsible for the drafting process, walk us through county planning's comments and some proposals to make some modifications to the law as it exists?
Are you going to project the revision?
Would you like to do that from your screen share? We could.
You don't have it in your.
You can, we can pull that up.
We've already got two hosts. I think that's probably enough.
Okay, well, you don't need to be a host to. Okay, let's see.
Dennis, could you also unmute Michelle, in case she wants to add anything?
There we go. Who did the screenshot? Oh, Michelle, you did. Thank you.
Are you seeing the revised document or are you seeing my entire desktop here?
We're seeing the revised document now.
Go ahead.
Okay, who's going to walk us through the county comments of the changes? Chris, would you like to do that, please?
So I can start really briefly. The county noted that they've.
Did we lose you, Chris? Folks, if you could mute yourself. Did we lose you, Chris, on this?
No, I just got muted again. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Somehow I just was muted again. So one of the things that the county has pointed out is that they have provided information about the potential impacts of STRs on housing availability and affordability and suggested that we include that in the intent and purposes statement. So we've included that information. And thank you. So they've also asked us to clarify that this is just a drafting issue that we have two different routes, essentially the annual operating permit, and then we have the once-a-year exception. And we've also removed references to a special permit because as currently drafted, the STR requirements do not require special permits for any of the STR operations. That was one of the changes that was made in the original proposal by the task force.
Yeah, and I just.
Yes, please.
Well, I just, if I could interrupt, that's a critical point to emphasize is that as, as originally proposed, having a site planned special permit review would have made it, you know, so onerous that, that probably very few would have survived that type of review. And certainly the costs associated with that and certainly, you know, burdening the, the planning board. So I think this was a key change was to make it easy, make it a simple application, a simple site review. Yeah. Site, I should say.
So the county also recommended that the response to complaints period be identified specifically. And so a one-hour period was proposed as being reasonable time. And the county asked us to clarify references to their occupancy tax. Their tax is called a hotel occupancy tax, although it does apply to STRs.
And again, as a reminder, we don't as a municipality receive any of those funds. They go to the county. What the county does do is they entered into a contract with host compliance or Granicus. And so they monitor the short-term rentals for us.
So the next change again was a removal of the references to the planning board's special permit approvals. And then addition of specific reference requiring verification of the application. Some of the requirements of the application relate to parking and some other specific standards that the building department is just being asked to verify.
Okay.
And this is really in the nature of a clarification. You can hold a, an annual operating permit or a one-time exception registration, but not both at the same time. And then the, this again was intended as a clarification that the STR 120-day limit was not applicable to farm stay STRs. And again, that restriction is not applicable to the one-time per calendar year registration.
And again, as a reminder, that's consistent with our existing zoning, which encourages lodging on farms. And there are, there are no lodging options in the residential districts currently.
So occupancy taxes, again, the, just clarifying the references. And someone had asked us to clarify the, which supervisor we're referring to. So this is the town supervisor. That is the designated hearing officer.
Oh, thanks.
For an appeal.
Okay.
So again, this is in response to a county request for clarification. Compensation is meant to include monetary or other compensation. For example, in the unhosed STRs, that term is intended to include a house swap. Recommended that the, the STRs, the provisions for not counting children, they actually recommended maybe only exempting children under two years of age because they wouldn't typically, they might sleep in a crib. And it was suggested that this be left at six years of age to count the number of people that are permitted. That's something for discussion. This provision was revised to provide that either a hosted or unhosed STR has a maximum of four bedrooms. And again, this, these provisions are the supplementary regulations that apply to hosted and unhosted STRs. Different requirements apply to farm stay STRs, which are regulated under 143-39.1. So in the farm stay STRs, the county asked us to confirm and clarify that the provisions regarding where sanitary procedure, sanitary facilities are required under county health department requirements, that those should be a requirement of this law. So this cross-reference is a requirement that if the county health department requires approval, then that approval would be a condition to the permit. And that's true for all of the STRs. So the next provision is to make it clear that if there's a farm stay STR that, and we, the original provision said that a related parcel that's operated in connection with the farm could be located on the RD3 or RD5 and, and have a portion of the residential, or excuse me, the STR units. It could also be the case that two adjacent AB parcels could be part of the same farm operation. And so both of those concepts are captured here now. And finally, I think this is a clarification that you're either having a farm stay STR or the registered STR is an option for, this would really apply to a primary residence on a farm. If someone didn't want to go through the procedures necessary to, to create the annual permit for the farm stay STR. The one-time registered STR would be available, just like it is for all the other partials. And that's it. Now, this is, can you just keep going? Because I think it's useful to just point out a couple of things. Can you just go to the first set of changes? Whoops, slow down. It's hard to see because they're not red. So the B and B establishments in this proposal are eliminated in favor of what will now just be the STRs. And the county, I will note that the county recommended that they believe that BnBs and STRs are two different things because STRs typically do not provide food. And the, the recommendation of the, of the committee was that I believe that the BnBs be eliminated. And that is the provisions for STRs really say if, if, you know, if a county B and B type license is required for food service, that it would be required. So the county might call it a B and B, but from the town's perspective, under this regulation, if an STR serves food, then it would be required to provide the county permit. If not, then it wouldn't be. So that is the primary distinction, I think, that had been made previously. There's a clarifying provision in here about home occupations in the, Michelle, the.
WC.
WC, thank you, because I can't see that line. And then going on to the substance of these provisions, if we could move down. So we have the STR hosted, STR unhosted and STR annual exception. So you can see that the annual exception says P in all of the zoning districts, it's permitted. And the, excuse me, with the, with the registration, of course. And then the hosted and unhosted, the hosted's are permitted in a number of the districts that you see there. And then unhosted are permitted only in the RD5 and RD3. And I believe that there is a, a further discussion based on some comments to include, Michelle, the.
To include the unhosed in the LD district as well.
So that may be an additional proposal to change that X to a P under LD, correct?
Yes, right here. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but right there, yes.
Okay.
Yep, the LD is one of the more rural districts we have and that'd be consistent with the three and five.
Yes, it's a 10-acre district. So it's, it's a very low city district, just like the Ag Business District.
So again, that's in the unhosed line.
Yes.
Because it's already permitted for the hosted. Okay.
I think that's it.
This is.
Michelle, is there anything else you want to point out?
The only thing I want to point out is a number of people asked, you know, why, what is the problem that's being fixed? And why are the regulations being proposed and so on? And I do want to stress that short-term rentals are currently not a permitted use in the town of Red Hook. The town of Red Hook zoning law states that any that is not specifically, you know, expressly identified as permitted is in fact prohibited. So the purpose of these regulations is to allow for short-term rentals under certain conditions and subject to annual operating permit and so on in the town of Red Hook where they are not currently allowed. There are some short-term rentals in the, in the town of Red Hook that are operating today, but they are not operating lawfully. So the purpose of these regulations is to permit short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions to all our town board members? Have you been unmuted? Dennis, have you unmuted everybody? Any questions on some of those clarifications? Before we go ahead and we take a look at some of the seeker work. Michelle, we're not gonna, we're not, obviously not going to, you know, make any decisions on some of the seeker work, part two and part three, but could you maybe just give us a a brief summary of how you prepared the draft documents?
Yes, do you want me to share, for example, the part two EAF? You may have to open something and then that's not.
There you go.
No, no, that's not, that's not.
That's not, okay.
Sure that I have it open right now. Does anybody else have this?
Sure, let me, let me go.
Maybe I have it right here. Sorry, am I, what am I sharing? It looks like I'm sharing my entire screen. Is that correct? No, sorry. I don't have it open right now. If you have it, Robert, you have it handy.
Sure, we'll, we'll go get it. Okay. Very good.
Great, okay. Can you scroll for me then? So this is the, the full, the part two of the full EAF. And it's identifying various, the purpose is to identify whether various aspects of the project will have an adverse environmental impact. The first one is impacts on land. And no development is proposed as part of the actions that I identified as being, having no impact. The second category, if you can scroll, continue to scroll, Robert, is impact on geological features. And again, no development is actually proposed as part of the action, so there would be no impact on geological features. Third one is impacts on surface waters. In the same comment, there's no development proposed as part of the action, so no impact on surface waters. Continue to scroll, please. Groundwater, same thing, no development is proposed. So there's no impacts on groundwater or flooding. No impacts on air, the same reasons. You can see that plants and animals, again, will not result in a loss of flora fauna. Or on, no adverse impacts on agricultural resources, no development is proposed on soils, significant soils or anything like that. Aesthetic resources, again, no impacts. Impacts, whoops, slow down a little bit. Impacts on historic and archaeological resources is the only impact that's actually identified as yes. Because the question is whether the proposed action may, you know, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. And there are resources within the town of Red Hook, the National Historic Landmark District along the river is on the national register. There are also individual properties that are on the national register in the town and sensitive archaeological sites. So those are identified as potential, but they are small to moderate impacts that would occur. Open space and recreation, no impact. The town does not have a critical environmental area, so there's no impact there, no impacts to transportation or energy. Impacts to noise, odor and light. There is no impact identified. The part, the negative declaration does discuss potential impacts of noise and odor in particular that could result from now allowing short-term rentals in the town. However, those would be mitigated by proposals, for example, to that short-term rental operators must comply with the noise ordinance, that certain activities would not be allowed, such as the operation of restaurants or having large events associated with short-term rentals like weddings and so on. So you can see a fuller discussion of that in the leg deck. But that is identified, there's no impact, no impact on human health. No impact on community plans. This is one of those double negative questions. So the proposed action, it says, is not consistent with adopted use plan. So we say no, because it actually is consistent. It's a little bit of a double negative there. There is discussion of this, a full discussion of both of comprehensive plan and consistency with community character in the negative declaration, which you can read. It has been posted online along with this short EAF, sorry, the fully EAF, part two.
And there is a reference in the comprehensive plan about tourism and residential neighborhoods and you know, speaks to traffic and those kinds of issues, but it's not necessarily comprehensive. Okay. Very good. And for the folks at home, it's required to review the environmental impact. Typically, you'll see with zoning legislation that there isn't necessarily significant impact. It's often used for projects to assess what the impacts of projects are. But there are times when one zoning can have a material impact on and positive one. We talked about centers and green space a few times, the positive environmental impact about being efficient with, where you encourage development and the open spaces that you're protecting at the same time. Okay, very good. So I'm gonna stop share. I don't think we need to do part three, especially since we're probably review part two again at our next meeting. Is there any other seeker we would like to do?
I would just say that the parts, you know, for the part three, it's going to be identical, identical to the neg- negative declaration. I would encourage the public to read the negative declaration in full. It's posted online. And it gives a more detailed discussion of potential impacts and how they're being addressed by the proposed local law.
Okay. Very good, town board members. Before we entertain a motion to extend the public hearing to December 14th, the proposed modifications to the draft. Any comments, questions? Christine Kane, did I see you were looking to?
No, I was just trying to get unmuted.
Dennis, can I ask you to unmute Jacob as well, please?
I, I, I had the notice up. I just wasn't, I was waiting.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Bill.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
I thought that there had been in the referral, a prohibition of Airbnbs in the one and one and a half acre zoning district. What happened to that?
In your initial prohibition, the current draft has the one-time exception of up to 29 days in the current draft. Are you looking to remove that?
No, no, that, that, the original draft said in all zoning districts, except one and one and a half.
And the modification was made at an earlier meeting to allow for the one-time exception for up to 29 days in R1 and R1 and a half. Are you wanting to revisit that? Yeah, are you wanting to revisit that?
No, I just wanted an understanding. So what about though, in the use table where Airbnbs, you know, class one, class two were not allowed in the one and one and a half acre zoning districts? Was that changed?
Well, the Airbnb is one and one and a half districts. Again, it's not, it's not allowed, except for the one-time exception, one time.
I think he means with the class one and class two home occupations.
Yes, that all we, that all we changed at the last meeting.
Yep, to allow it or not?
No, we do, we don't have the classes now. We will remove the classes.
In your, in your initial summary, I thought it said that Airbnbs are allowed in all districts. Wasn't that one of your four points?
That's correct. With the one-time exception in the R1 and R1 and a half, everybody's allowed to have it for at least a certain period of time.
For the one-time exception?
Exactly, yeah. I'm sorry.
It's not, it's, it's a prohibited use otherwise.
And the one and the one and a half, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Robert.
Yes, Bill.
I had one clarification on the issue of special permits that I think needs to be put out for people to understand that if a homeowner resident wants to convert an accessory structure or build an accessory structure to make an accessory dwelling, say the classic mother-in-law suite, converting the apartment over the garage, that still does require a special permit. So the fact that someone wants to do that, for, for example, doing a short-term rental as opposed to a long-term rental, doesn't matter what the purpose is. Those would be situations where the, the homeowner would still be required to get a special permit. And I just want to make sure people understand that you, the fact that we say special permits aren't required, that's for existing places that are already, you know, at code.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? The provisions in the current draft to allow folks six months to come into compliance, to make their application and to receive approval. And so I think, you know, one of the things that we might consider is for that first year is allowing the permit. If we're giving them until, say, June, for example, just to throw out the end of June, make that first permit for a year and a half, you know, something, think about for the remainder of 22 and 23. There was some comment from county planning about was a three-month period to allow folks to renew a permit, which we don't think is going to be onerous. It's just a renewal. And so you would need to indicate anything that may have changed about the property. We don't, actually don't think the application itself is at all onerous. It's very simple and straightforward, the, the language for that. But, you know, we might consider allowing that first, and we can take this up at the next, at the next meeting, but we might consider that first permit to go through 2023. Since it's a half year, does that make sense?
Cycle of timing, I think it does. Otherwise, you're sort of operating on two separate, separate 12-month tracks. And this way it gets you back to the January 1st to December 31st schedule.
Yeah, okay.
I just think we should, I, I think we should clarify in this initial period that you can, you don't have to wait until, in your example, for instance, the end, you don't have to wait until the end of June to apply. Because this is gonna be, you know, a different situation, because someone who has an existing STR that will be allowed to continue the STR is not necessarily going to want to lose, lose six months of rental time waiting to apply for the permit. So I just think we have to make sure that we clarify that particularly for the first year, if the law is implemented.
We would encourage people to make their applications timely, yeah. Okay.
One other thing?
Yes, Bill.
Could you give us the numbers again of, of parcels in the town of Red Hook that would be allowed to have an STR under the proposed law?
Well, including the one-time exemption, and again, I want to make that clear to those folks at home. You're looking at over two and a half thousand parcels in town that would be permitted of the ones that would only have that one-time exception up to 29 days. That would be about a thousand, little over a thousand parcels or so. That, that are in those.
Twenty-five hundred, okay.
A thousand out of twenty-five hundred or so. There's approximately, and again, for the folks at home, I'm giving you approximate numbers from a very large chart. I don't actually have, you know, an accurate description. I just have a list of all the properties and all the parcels in all their zoning districts, but approximately 1,300 are within the R3 and R5. And so those would be eligible to have 120 days worth of STRs. And again, to go back to the important point, what's changed in your proposal that you, as the task force admitted, is now they can be unhosted, which we believe is really the primary desire for folks visiting our community is to have an unhosted situation. But of course, we've heard from folks who do have hosted properties here in the town as well. And so there are over 200 ABD parcels. And there are many, many hundreds of parcels that are in the two villages. And they, of course, will adopt whatever regulations they feel are appropriate for their community. So we
Well, I, I, yeah, I know. But I mean, as far as going forward goes, I would hope that you could address this tremendous misunderstanding in the town of Red Hook that the town of Red Hook Town Board is trying to restrict Airbnbs. If you have numbers that can show that you're doing anything except restricting Airbnbs, that might be impressive at your next board meeting, at your next public hearing. And also what other surrounding towns are doing. I don't think they're allowing such generous opportunity, you know, for people to use their property for Airbnbs.
Well, well, certainly, you know, each community is doing what they feel is best for their community. The more rural ones, the ones that are villages and cities, Hudson, I think, allows only 60 days that you can rent out. But you'll find the entire spectrum. I would say if, you know, you had to locate where we are on the spectrum, we'd probably be you know, leaning towards the more permissive. I gave you the, the two neighboring examples early on of Myland and the village of Rhinebeck.
And Robert, you know, looking at the zoning map, I think we did not mention this. You said most, but I really think if you look at the zoning map and you look at the RD3, RD5 and the Ag Business District, geographically, they represent 75 to 80% of the town. That's pretty considerable.
This is true. And, you know, there's potential for, but as far as the number of parcels, it's still a majority, but it's not the 80%. But obviously, many of those could have more parcels and more homes on them. We have a few hundred vacant parcels in the township, so those can be developed as well. And when we're talking about affordable housing next year, which I hope we will be, I'm on the affordable housing task force for the county, and it's too early to say what's going to come out of that. But already we're hearing, you know, some of the things you might suspect, which is, you know, housing prices are going up. People are feeling locked out of rentals and buying affordable homes. And that the, the communities really need to spur the creation of, whether you call them ADUs, accessible, accessible dwelling units, small housing, and to incentivize the developers to build that, because it's not necessarily something that's a profitable venture. So again, it's all, all tools, all mechanisms that we need to figure out, just like we have with the farms to allow the farmers to do what they do best, which is adapt in order to, to provide and, and support affordable housing. But the one thing that they started out with is protect what you have. Protect your more affordable housing stock in the community. And so you, you hear that debate tonight about well, if it's, it's taken up by the short-term rentals, then there goes the affordable housing. On the other side, you hear somebody say, well, but I want to stay in my house. And that's why I'm renting out a room for short-term rentals to help stay in the house. And so, you know, those are the, the contrasting views. Okay, it's getting late. It's approaching 11 o'clock. At this point, I would like to, unless there's a further comment, I would like to put up for consideration the resolution, which Deanna, what number is that? Has Deanna been? Unmuted. Unmuted, Dennis. Deanna, are you with us?
She's right there.
She's right there, Dana, if you would unmute yourself.
Eighty four.
Eighty four, thank you very much. It's dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. It's a resolution amending local law proposed and establishing a date for continued public hearing regarding the adoption of local law. G one, we'll call it, proposed of twenty twenty one, a local law regarding short term rentals. And it goes over what we've reviewed so far. And let's, shall we again, put seven thirty five on December fourteenth. For the folks at home. And the instructions will be the same, the notice will be the same for this public hearing. And I assume there are second.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel.
Aye.
Bill O'Neill.
I'll abstain.
You're gonna abstain on voting tonight? Okay.
Yep.
Very good. And Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Very good. And for the folks at home, thank you very much for for. Participating. Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts and and your opinions. We encourage you to continue to do so, not on, not only on this issue, but other issues. One more plug for notify me on redhook.org. We've had it for three years now. It's a great way to stay up on on what's happening in your local government. Okay. Terrific. Thanks very much. We're gonna move on now, folks, to the other item on the agenda. And then we're going to go into executive session. We heard back from the county on the CDBG grant, our engineer. Got back to us and say, well, actually, the proposed septic water work for both town hall here. And for Saint Margaret's doesn't technically qualify for the grant or or may not qualify. So we're going to expand as an application our efforts to improve ADA accessibility. And so they're going to work up some some more projects there at Saint Margaret's, Bill O'Neill. And the application now would only be eligible for a hundred thousand dollars. And so what I would ask for you, and the the grant is due tomorrow, by the way, December first. Is if you are willing to revise the application based upon the guidance we received. It's resolution eighty five, authorizing the submission of a revised application to the twenty twenty two Duchess County. Community Development Block grant, it revise and and restate resolution number seventy seven. Adopted on November ninth. Any questions? Okay, it's getting late. I assume, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Christine Kane.
Aye.
Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Bill O'Neill, are you abstaining again?
I know, I vote aye on that.
On this one? Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Folks, we normally go through our summation of committee reports, each of the board members. As a liaison to several committees, I think I'll let the report speak for themselves on our website, if you'd like to read them through. Because the time is. Scaping us, it's almost eleven o'clock. So at this time, I am going to ask the board. Have a motion to go into executive session. We're going to do this. By conference call. The executive session is for the purpose of discussing negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement. And so for the town board members, if you would mute yourself and also turn off your video. Dennis, if you would help with that, and then we'll go into separate rooms and we'll do our conference call. Before we leave, those of you in the public, once again, thank you very much for joining us.
Executive session.
Yes, thank you, Jacob. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Bill O'Neill.
Aye.
Bill Hamel. I think we have.
Well, he's muted. Maybe you could do a thumbs up, Bill. There you go, thumbs up.
I think, I think we have four, we can go into executive session, but it'll be done by conference call. Thank you all very much for joining us. Please have a safe and happy holiday season if we don't see you on December fourteenth. Okay, very good, folks, it's eleven forty six at this time. I would like to make the motion. To close the town board meeting of November thirtieth. Is there a second? Okay, looks like you all are still muted from from earlier. Let's see if we can. Okay, very good. Thank you, Jacob. All in favor, Bill Hamel.
Aye.
Christine Kane.
Aye.
Good night all, thank you very much.
Good night.
Stay healthy, please.
You will.